Good evening to you all and welcome to our regular scheduled meeting for November 16. We have covered tonight, so we'll jump right into the agenda. All of you noticed probably the seating capacity is less since we're social distance. So having called a meeting to order, I will ask the town clerk as she will to do the roll call.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Behringer here. Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you so very much. I'm going to recognize now Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Behringer who will announce our invocation. And excuse me, well first of all, lead us in the place of allegiance and then we'll have our invocation. If you can stand, would you do so at this time?
Let me lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I have invited Pastor Brian Crumpler from Hayes Chapel Christian Church to give the invocation this evening.
Welcome, sir. Glad to have you.
Thank you for this opportunity. Let's go to the Lord in word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us and we thank you for the town of Garner and the wonderful people that we have. Thank you for your blessings upon us and we now ask that you would just be with our leaders as they have this meeting tonight or give them wisdom to make the good decisions and discretion and to be able to help our town to move forward and we ask your blessings upon this. We thank you for so many that serve their community and we ask that you would just help them. We also pray for protection and help for our police and our firemen and our EMS and first responders and Lord just to help them and take care of them. Now, Father, we ask that everything that's said and done will bring honor and glory to your name in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for taking your time to come and lead us this evening. We like it when we have to...
Thank you.
Okay, we will jump right into the agenda now. Most of you who attended our meetings or are familiar with them know that our first section is petitions and comments. I'll just read to you the brief explanation of this particular portion of the agenda. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. Interested parties can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform or provide written comments. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And so I'd like to recognize our town clerk at this time. There is usually a sign up sheet outside. We ask folks to sign up for that if they will. Are there any persons that we have on the list, Madam Clerk? Okay. So in addition to that opportunity, I will ask at this time if there are persons here who would like to have this opportunity to make comments or petitions that did not sign up. Are there any? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move to the next item of the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. And council, as I'm asking you to do that, you will notice that there is already one scheduled closed session, but in addition to that, we have, I believe, three add-on closed sessions. I know one is for discussion on a personnel matter. And Suturni, can you give us the site that we would need for that?
Yes, so in addition to litigation personnel is subsection 143-318.11A6. I believe there's also going to be for economic development, which is subsection A4, and acquisition of property, which is subsection A5.
Cover them all, Mr. Manager. Okay. So council, you heard the add-ons there as it relates to the closed session. So with that added, I would now entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move.
Okay. Properly made in seconds. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No. Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, we have several presentations and I'm pleased to note that we will begin tonight with a recognition of a person from our police department and their presence is here with us tonight. We see them. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for appearing here this evening. So I'll recognize the town manager this time for the presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Town council, tonight we want to honor the service of Captain Chris Clayton and I'm going to ask him to come up here and stand in the spotlight for a moment while we talk about him for a little while. Maybe embarrass him a little bit, maybe. So we'll see. Officer Clayton, he was hired 1293, December of 93, as a police officer, and then he was promoted to sergeant in November of '01, promoted to lieutenant in August of 2012, and then promoted to captain March 2021. So about every nine or 10 years, he got a pretty good promotion. So we want to honor him for just working his self through the ranks there. He attended the FBI National Academy session in 2013 and that's about a month?
Ten weeks.
Ten week session, training session where they go to Quantico, Virginia, and a pretty intense law enforcement training. In March of 1997, he was named one of five outstanding public servants in North Carolina and he was the only police officer so named that year. So quite an honor, quite an honor. So like I said, he came to Garner in '93. That was some time back. Just to tweak your memory a little bit, the Dallas Cowboys won the Super Bowl. I'm not a Dallas fan. I hope they win this year just because I have a former teammate that's a coach. Jurassic Park was the number one film, one of your favorites, right?
It was.
Yep. And the minimum wage was $4.25 and popular music artists were Dr. Dre, Ice Cube, and Madonna. So you got to pick one.
You know I'm going with Madonna.
Madonna? Okay, all right. Madonna, we'll take that. But we certainly grateful to have had Chris for these last 28 years as a police officer. I believe during his time, he also served as a public information officer. So he represented us well in the public, was often put on the spot on TV. He was the point person for explaining some of the things that would happen around town, some of the not-so-pleasant things and also some good things because PIOs also puts out positive message. So we want to thank him for his service there. And so I am going to call up Chief Smith and she's going to say a few words about Captain Clayton and do some other things.
There's a lot I want to say, but things I shouldn't because we're in public, we'll save those for later. I do think it's a testament to you, Chris, if you look out in the room to see all the people who've come out to support you tonight. So says a lot about you and who you are and about your career. So one of the things that I wanted to do tonight, unfortunately, your Order of the Longleaf Pine is not available, but what I wanted to do was read the recommendation that retired Chief Benz wrote prior to his retirement. So, excuse me. I'm writing to offer my support for Captain Chris Clayton to be honored with the awarding of the North Carolina Order of the Longleaf Pine in recognition of his outstanding career of service to the people of North Carolina. Captain Clayton has completed a 28-year career of service with the Garner Police Department and will be retiring December 1st of this year with 30 years of credible law enforcement experience, all of which have been with Garner, by the way. Captain Clayton began his career in December of '93 and has served our citizens in many ways throughout his career. He has served as a school resource officer at Garner Magnet High School for several years, keeping our students and faculty safe. He was an excellent role model for the students, starting a police explorers club at the school for those interested in a career in law enforcement. He also worked diligently with our at-risk middle school kids through the department's years of the challenge camp program. A lot of you have missed out on that. It was a lot of fun. He was promoted to sergeant in 2001 where he led a patrol team for many years before taking on the role of supervisor for the traffic safety team. Captain Clayton worked diligently to make our streets and highways safer. He became a certified traffic reconstructionist through the Institute of Police Technology and Management. He has continued to lead a team of accident reconstructionists who investigate our more serious accidents that result in death or serious injury. Captain Clayton was promoted to lieutenant in 2012 where he assumed command of the Criminal Investigations Division. He also led our Patrol Operations Division before being promoted to captain over the Administration Bureau in December of 2020. He is a graduate of the 253rd Session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico and has continued to serve the North Carolina FBI in a chapter as an officer on their executive board. Captain Clayton has also served many years on the International Association of Chiefs of Police Patrol and Tactical Operations Committee. He is a certified firearms and physical fitness instructor, providing thousands of hours of training to our officers over his career. And finally, Captain Clayton is a certified assessor for the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies where he has worked to help other agencies meet and exceed policing best practices. Overall, Captain Clayton has spent his entire career serving others and putting others before himself. He is humble and has never expected any recognition for his efforts. He does these things simply because they are the right and proper things to do for a well-functioning society. He represents not only the best of law enforcement, but the best of any citizen of North Carolina. We have been so fortunate to have him as a Garner police officer and I believe he's an excellent candidate for the Order of the Longleaf Pine. And that was from retired Chief Benz. So, Chris, I echo a lot of what Chief Benz said. You've had a remarkable career, one in which you should be very, very proud. I'm going to have to find somebody else to have intense conversations with during staff meetings, but you will truly be missed by myself, by members of the command staff, and by your peers that are here to support you.
Yeah, I think it says a lot about Captain Clayton. So when you look in the room here and look especially at the back, the number of officers that came out to support him tonight. So I want to extend a gift from the town to Captain Clayton here.
Thank you, sir.
Don't spend it all in one place. I forgot about the Pope hat. I think you got the, did you get the record? You have the, or you're in the top five, right?
The old Pope hat for GPD, I have the record.
The old Pope hat.
That was about 20 pounds ago.
Well, I wasn't going to mention that.
Maybe 15 years ago.
I wasn't going to mention that, but you know, since you did. But anyway, congratulations and thank you and give you an opportunity to say anything you want and introduce your family or whatever you want to say.
Thank you. It's weird, it's weird being up here. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, officers, Chief Benz, Chief Smith, my family that's watching from Oregon, and my family that's here tonight with me. You always run the risk of leaving somebody out if you say thanks, but I'm going to try to do some thanks and why that's important. And if I do leave somebody out, I apologize. First and foremost, my parents, they raised me in a Christian home and taught me the value of service above self and that has always stuck with me. My dad passed away two years ago. I wish he could be here now, obviously, but I believe in the realm of spirituality that he is probably aware of what's going on right now, regardless of what individual beliefs you have. My mother, a very dedicated and servant-oriented woman, and so I thank her also. My sister, one of my best friends, who also puts other people first. About 10 or, well, more than that, 15 years ago, I decided that it was okay to be a gay male police officer in the town of Garner and that wasn't an easy decision for me. But I met my partner Jason soon after that and we've been together 11 years. And when I first came out, I had conversations with town staff people that I knew and trusted and they supported me and that meant a lot to me. My hope is that our town continues accepting and appreciating all types of diversity. We've made great strides in it. But 28 years ago when I started this career, I never thought I would stand up here and be able to say that in front of a group of people. So to all of you who have accepted me and loved me, I appreciate it. Sorry, I did not mean to ignore Jason's parents. I'll get in trouble for that. Donald and Cheryl, thank you very much. Hardin Watkins used to talk about here that in many of our roles as town employees, we get to do what other people have to volunteer to do and we get paid to do it. And that's truly what I've loved about law enforcement, is that I got to go out and make a real difference in the world every single day I went to work. Some days it was easy, some days it was tough, but that's truly the heart of our mission, is making that difference in the world. And all of us should strive to do that. I just got lucky enough to get paid to do it and that is what I'm thankful for. To those of you that are going to carry on, I appreciate you so much. I went to Officer Hayes' worst funeral this past week and I, or I guess it was a week and a half ago or so, and he was the night owl officer that was killed in the line of duty. And his chief gave a remarkable eulogy and talked about now is not the time for people to not want to be police. Police are more needed in our society than ever before. And to our mayor and council and staff, I appreciate your support of the police. You do that. We know it, we feel it, and we appreciate it. And it is what keeps us and brings us back to work every day. And when you have departments that talk about they're not staffed or they're not fully staffed, knock on wood, we don't have that problem and it's because of our community support, our council support, and our management support. So in closing, I'd just like to say, thanks Chief Moss for hiring me. Thank you Chief Zudema for what you've done for me. I don't think he's here. Chief Benz, a remarkable friend and mentor, and I know you're still in the process, so I won't tell any stories about her yet.
Please don't.
She was trying to get me, but I'm like, okay.
That's for another time.
So yes, we'll save those stories for another time. But Lori and I were sergeants together very early on in our career and we were partners and we had a great time. So in closing, it goes by quick and again, I thank you for the opportunity to work here. It's where I grew up, it's where I graduated from high school, it's where I made my home for most of my lifetime, and it has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this police department and the citizens and people that come and visit the town of Garner.
Captain Clayton, before you leave the podium, I'm sure there are some folks on this day that would like to say a few words, including your mayor. And I'm not sure I could add a lot to what has already been said. As a council member here in the town of Garner since 2007, I guess, and now as mayor, I think I've come to appreciate even more the good work that police officers do. And many would say that it's not so easy being a police officer these days. I think you would agree with me that certainly things have changed somewhat during the 28 years that you have served here. But my interactions with you have always been positive. I'm trying to, I don't want to speak out of turn here. Was your dad a former chaplain with the police department?
Yes, sir, he did serve as a chaplain.
I was thinking that he was and I remember him. And I'm trying to remember if I had the privilege of maybe running in one of the torch run races. I think you participated in some of those and it's always hard for me to keep up with you, but at any rate, those were some good days. 28 years is a long time, in some ways, short time in others, but you've served our town faithfully and for that, this town is indebted to you for your many years of service. And you're still a young man, so you still have opportunities to use your God-given talents and abilities in a very positive way and I'm confident that you will do that. And your courage demonstrated here tonight in regards to your personal life is commendable. And so I believe the path that you've set before you now in retirement, we'll be looking forward to hearing of other things that you're involved with. So keep up the good work. Don't forget your Garner folks here and stop by to see us whenever you can. And with that, I will see Mayor Pro Tem Behringer if you have any comments and we'll go around to the others.
I met Chris shortly after I moved to Garner. I became involved in community watch and that was about the time that Chris, I think he'd been with the police department for about a year and did a lot of work together trying to get the community watch started in our part of town. And then, you know, I'd see Chris around town as years went by and I always appreciated his work. When my sons were teenagers, I used to tell them that they had better behave themselves wherever they were because if they didn't, somebody who knew me would see them and they would tell me. And that came home to me about seven years ago because I ran into Chris in the airport and we were, my husband and I were headed to Holland to visit our son and his wife there. They were living there for about three, two and a half, three years. So I met, saw Chris in the airport and I said, hi, how are you doing? And that was at RDU. Then I ran into him in the airport again in New York and then again in Amsterdam. So I'm starting to think that my children have done something to me and sent somebody to watch me. But those are my fond memories of Chris, along with my appreciation of his service. It's meant a lot and I really, really been privileged to know you.
Chris, I think it speaks so highly of you when we hear about the different positions you've held here with the police department, the roles you've had, the ranks as you've moved up the ranks here, so's your adaptability, your diversity as far as taking on new roles and challenges, expanding those roles like you did when you were SRO. And again, it's always proud of me being a Garner graduate and a Garner guy, like you're the same. And you've worked your career here, we're proud of you and best wishes to you. Again, listen, Mayor, you're a young man, so you've got other challenges ahead, but best wishes and thank you for your many years of service.
I'll let Mr. Vance go next and then I'll come back to Mr. Matthews.
Yes, Captain Clayton, thank you so much for your faithful service to the town of Garner and it is greatly appreciated by myself and I'm sure the citizens that you have protected over the number of years. And I sincerely hope that you continue to be engaged with the town in some form or fashion on a volunteer basis and continue to make your presence known and it would be a great help. And my hope for you is that you continue to have good health and a bright future.
Yeah, Chris had told me back at an event was that he was going to be retiring. I said, you're too young to be retiring, but like the mayor said, you've got a great future ahead of you and you've really made a difference in this town and a lot of people that you've come in contact with. And wherever you go, I know you're going to do an outstanding job and it's great to see all the police here backing you up and that's a pretty sharp SWAT team we've got here. I didn't realize what we had going on there, so. But go ahead and take this opportunity, of course, you know this and Chief Smith knows it and all the team back there, that the city council does have you back and don't ever forget that. Thank you. Good luck.
Good, Dellinger.
I'm still afraid of retiring faster than I can get to know them. COVID is mostly to blame for that over the past two years, so unfortunately I haven't gotten the opportunity to know you. But I thank you for your service and I thank you for your words up here as well. It's sort of a living, breathing example of service and acceptance in Garner and I'm sure everyone in this room appreciates that. Good luck in whatever you do next, don't go far. We always need people doing things around town and especially familiar faces, so thank you.
Once again, thank you all very much. It's been, like I said, an honor and a privilege. It truly has. Thank you.
All the best to you and thank you for supporting us. Okay, that's not the only presentation we have this evening. Actually, the next one is in the form of a proclamation and I'm pleased at this time to recognize Councilmember Elmo Vance who will share with you a proclamation by the mayor. And let's see, I believe we have someone from the Historical Society who's going to be available. I will join you right down there for the presentation after he reads it, okay? Thank you. Mr. Vance.
Proclamation, Ghana Historic Museum at the Depot. Whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the heritage that has shaped us as a community. And whereas the Ghana area Historical Society has endeavored to preserve and protect historical artifacts and material about our town's heritage and whereas cooperation between the Ghana area Historical Society along with area citizens has resulted in a surge of interest in Garner's past and the dedication to keeping it fresh on the minds of everyone. And whereas the town of Garner found it favorable to relocate and restore the depot, Garner's historic gem, to a location where it could be operable. And whereas the Ghana area Historical Society was looking for an opportunity and location to operate a museum sharing Garner's past and whereas that with the support from the society members and donors, a remarkable effort has gone into making it possible to open Garner's first history museum. Now therefore, Ken Marshburn, mayor of the town of Garner, proclaimed November 20th, '21 as Ghana History Museum at the Depot Day in Garner and invite all citizens to attend its grand opening on Saturday, November 20th, '21 from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
It's particularly a pleasure for me to present this to Ms. Bass and the other folks. Ms. Bass, as many of you know, served as town clerk here for many years. But, yeah, was it 15?
I was here for 30 years.
Oh, okay, okay. And I was going to say, had I for some reason forgotten that this was to occur, I was reminded this week, somebody came and took a picture off of my wall in the mayor's office. I knew it was going to happen, of course. It was a nice painting of the...
And it's hung in a beautiful location.
I'm sure it is. I'll be anxious to go see it. Now you got to help me find it. That's fine. But anyway, I present this proclamation to you and look forward to the grand opening. I expect to be there and for all the work that the Historical Society, we talked about it many years ago, but you ladies have made it happen and I look forward to seeing you. Anything you'd like to at this time?
Well, we have three words. Oh, happy day. This has been in the makings for, y'all have heard this over and over, for approximately 30 years. And we finally got it together a few years ago with a lot of hard work and major support from the town in helping us get the building and to get into the building and we're just so very excited.
Say anything you'd like to at this time?
Well, we have three words. Oh, happy day. This has been in the makings for, y'all have heard this over and over, for approximately 30 years. And we finally got it together a few years ago with a lot of hard work and major support from the town in helping us get the building and to get into the building and we're just so very excited.
Say anything you'd comment?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We just really appreciate all the support from the town, from the council, from the town staff who've worked very hard to make it happen. I made the comment the other day, sometimes it feels like we've been pushing a big rock up a steep hill for the last few years, but I think we're close to the top of the hill and we just appreciate the support from the citizenry as well as from the council and
Okay, council, I believe we are now ready to move to the next segment of our agenda. That is the consent agenda. We have two items there. So unless council desires to pull an item from there, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Will you move?
Expected by Ms. Behringer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote aye. Aye. If there's any opposition, no. And as so ordered. Okay, we are now moving to public hearings. There are two of those, I believe. And so I'm going to recognize Mr. David Banford from our planning department, who will make the initial presentation to us this evening. Mr. Banford.
Open the hearing. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional rezoning request with a site plan for a multifamily development attached as a zoning condition. This is KCZSP21-01. Applicant is Zimmer Development Company. Owner is Broomfield LLC. The request is to rezone 27.41 acres from community retail zoning to multifamily two, conditional use District 252, for the development of a multifamily community. This site will accommodate over 100 multifamily units and would therefore require, therefore be required to come back to you as a special use permit before the town council, as a subsequent date to be determined. There are zoning conditions proposed as part of this request to limit the range of uses. And there are also some conditions proposed for amenities offered for the development. This is a vicinity map of the rezoning site outlined in black here. We have to the north. There is a small service road along the northern boundary of the site called, I believe, Broomfield Hunter Lane. The area you see kind of shaded in the light blue is the existing Town of Garner Annext Corporate Limits. So this site would be eventually annexed into the town limits. North and east of the site is in the City of Raleigh's jurisdiction. To the south, we have Garner Station Boulevard and North-South Station, retail shopping centers. And then to the west, we have Junction Boulevard with industrial warehouse, office, flex space type uses. This is a Google Street View looking east. This is Broomfield Hunter Lane, the service road that DOT put in to provide access to the property when Tryon Road was realigned a few years back. And Tryon Road is located to the left here. So the site does not have any direct access to Tryon Road, but it has access to Tryon Road through Broomfield Hunter Lane, over to Junction Boulevard, and then over to Tryon Road. This map shows the zoning in this area. The dark red is heavy commercial zoning service business. And this this allows the uses that are out there now, the heavy, kind of heavy commercial flex space industrial uses. The site is zoned community retail, which is a step down from service business. Community retail allows indoor retail sales, office, restaurants, daycares, and about 52 uses in all. No outdoor storage is permissible in the CR district. To the north, we have City of Raleigh, Renaissance Park, zoned PD, to the east of City of Raleigh, zoning IX-3, which is industrial. And then the surrounding zoning in Garner currently is service business. This is a chart of the zoning history of this area of Garner. The oldest case we have on file was from 1988, which was when North-South Station was rezoned. The most recent case we have was from 2017, when the site was rezoned from industrial one to community retail. So the previous zoning of this site under review tonight was light industrial. Community retail, we've covered this previously. It's a retail zoning district, 52 uses permissible. All uses have to be inside and enclosed buildings, so no outdoor retail sales and no outdoor storage. This is a conditional request, so the applicant has proposed some zoning conditions as part of this request. The first condition is to limit the range of uses down. MF2 allows around 20 different uses. The applicant has narrowed that list down. Second condition, this is a standard condition. We put on all rezonings for residential districts. Condition three, vinyl siding will not be used as the primary exterior building material. Four, a clubhouse will be provided with a minimum square footage of 5,000 square feet. Pool deck will be provided with a minimum square footage of 8,000 square feet. A dog park will be provided with a minimum square footage of 1,500 square feet. A playground will be provided with a minimum square footage of 1,500 square feet. A pool cabana will be provided with a minimum square footage of 1,000 square feet. And lastly, development of this site shall be completed in conformance with the approved site plan. So there is a site plan for a multifamily development attached to this application as a zoning condition. There was a neighborhood meeting held on October the 14th. There were no attendees. There was no one from the public that attended the meeting. This map is in your staff report. It shows our, shows the site, a 300-foot notice, notification buffer, and then the darker parcels are the parcels that fall within that notification buffer, and were notified of both the neighborhood meeting and our public hearing notice. I will stop here and let Jeff pick up and go over the details of the site plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. You'll be seeing me for a little bit as I'm taking over what were Ms. Gray's site plans and reviews. This project does, as David mentioned, encompass 27.41 acres, which would theoretically have a unit maximum for dwelling units of 397. This master plan caps at 339. There, just for your general information. Here is the site plan. And just to, just to kind of remind you, this is a very similar process to the project that we had on Yergen Road and 70. This was submitted before we adopted the new 160D compliant version of the UDO. So they were already on their way towards developing what we call kind of 70% site plan drawings. If this had been submitted afterwards, we would be seeing a much more simplified version of this site plan. But since they had already proceeded, we are showing you pretty much where they're going to be. You'll be seeing this almost exact same thing again, probably at the special use permit hearing, should this go forward. But just to highlight here, they, the site is impacted by a couple of noose riparian buffers. This one is directly behind North Station. And then there's another one that cuts up here from Junction Boulevard, and also includes a pretty large area of surrounding wetlands. For the most part, except for where they have to cross it to try to maintain two points of access into the site, they're largely being left alone. We have one multifamily area kind of identified up here in the northwest corner, potentially a different kind of layout and style. And then a larger multifamily area here to the south. The stormwater would be handled through both a dry retention pond and a couple of sand filters. So they are, rather than using up horizontal space, they are actually going underground to handle some of their stormwater. And the other thing about this is with both the long-range road plans, plus the BRT potential that would follow that road plan, we have worked with them to identify kind of how far the Grinnell Street, what we're calling Grinnell Street Extension, can be built. What you're seeing here would be half of the future cross section. So you see a two-lane, two-lane section here, and a little bit of room left over for half of the median. They can construct it down to approximately this area, so we would accept a fee in lieu for the remainder. Engineering is also here tonight, and they can answer a few questions potentially about the future routing of this. We did ask them to study the horizontal curvature that would be needed to tie in to Garner Station Boulevard at an appropriate location if that shopping center were to redevelop. So that is why you see a little bit of a curve here in the right-of-way to begin to accommodate that. Then on the other end, there is currently a driveway on Tryon Road that is directly opposite the existing Grinnell Street in Raleigh. This is just a private access point, and Broomfield Hunter was extended to their property line to give their customers a way to head westbound on Tryon. They cannot make a left out of this driveway, so the only way that folks can get there to do that is to take this road out to Junction Boulevard, where they can make a left at that light. So what we are showing here is where the future edge of the realigned right-of-way would be to to actually line up with Grinnell Street and make that a possible through movement. So these pieces will either happen as part of private development, or potentially with the BRT project itself. There are funds to to finish any road improvements that are not yet done by the time that may be ready. For this rezoning, the expected level of residential development did require a TIA. However, largely because of the recent realignment of Tryon Road, there were no off-site, major off-site impacts where DOT recommended any improvements. There are, though, for the site plan, our ordinance does require two separated points of access. So it either needs to be a median divided section added along Broomfield Hunter, or some kind of emergency access agreement through that adjacent parcel. We have allowed that in the past at the Evolve Drive apartment project off of 50. Their second point of access was from the neighborhood through a Knox Box controlled gate. Again, the future Grinnell Street widening will be a four-lane facility and could occur through either of those. We have looked at it preliminarily for the landscaping and buffering requirements. The existing rule at the time was for that sliding scale of 12 to 14%. Due to the presence of the riparian buffers and the wetlands, they're actually at 22.6% just with preservation. So the overall tree canopy will be enhanced even further once all their landscaping would be put in. Perimeter buffers, based on the uses that they've limited themselves to with this rezoning request, it would be 15 feet in all cases. So we can say that with certainty, and preservation of existing vegetation would be maximized and supplemented as needed. Again, with street buffers, again, because all the uses are categorized the same, we have a 20-foot street buffer on Broomfield Hunter and 15 feet on Grinnell. And then, of course, street trees will need to be provided, one for every 40 feet. In terms of open space, they are required to have 10%. Again, we don't know the exact amount at this time, but it's at least 22.6% because of the wetlands and riparian buffer. They're also adding all the active recreation amenities that David talked about, so it will be even higher than that. Apart from the noose river buffers, there's no additional FEMA-designated floodplains on the site. And in terms of water sewer infrastructure, water lines would be extended along Broomfield Hunter here to the north, and then down Grinnell Street into the site. You can also see that there's currently existing sewer lines where the future roadway would go, and then a couple of outfalls here further to the south. They would be connecting to both this one along the eastern perimeter and this one on the south. In terms of parking, multifamily Area 1 and the Active Recreation Center are likely to fully meet the parking table requirements. Multifamily Area 2 likely would not, as it's currently estimated and configured. This would require a traffic engineer certification for any granted reduction by the permit issuing authority. In that case, with this coming back as a special use permit, that would be y'all. Specifics can be addressed at that time. Finally, as this would move forward to special use permit hearing, we would finalize the lighting for streets and common areas, get the final details on the stormwater management devices, ensuring a few other things with the water lines, and then reevaluating, once again, the landscaping and the parking. So in terms of the next steps, again, just a reminder, this would go to Planning Commission then for their review and recommendation to talk about plan consistency. They would send that written consistency statement back to you all, and you would have to then also consider the reasonableness of the request. So for tonight, we do recommend that once you have heard comments, concerns, and questions from the public, that you consider forwarding this to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you, for your very good presentations. If you have questions and or comments directed at either one of these, we will do that. I'll start with Mr. Matthews. Anything, sir?
Nothing specific, other than with the piece of property, you know, it's, in my opinion, I think it's a great place to put this because of it's surrounded and be hard to develop into a retail area anyway. And with the growth we've got going on, I think it's a good-looking project, and we'll see what the Planning Commission does with it.
Yes, let's go over this Grinnell Street connection and so forth. Let me make sure I've read it, you know, looked at it before. They're going to be required, it's going to be, there should be a four-lane divided median, maybe BRT somewhere along the line in the middle. So they're going to require to be on two lanes. They'll have access to these two lanes to come out. They cannot turn, they'll be right in, right out only on Tryon Road, I'm assuming. Is that correct? Or is it just will connect to Broomfield Hunter, will never go to Tryon Road?
Yeah, it will, for now, it would just come out here to Broomfield Hunter. Once the final project, whether it's just a road project or it's road and BRT, then it would get realigned, and there would be right in, right out, with potentially the BRT having cross, like a dedicated, signalized crossing just for BRT.
I think everybody up here understands BRT, but maybe for the listening public
Yes, but Bus Rapid Transit, which is part of the wait transit plan.
So the only way to get into this, if it was approved as is proposed, is for emergency vehicles, you've got to go all the way down to the stoplight at Junction Boulevard and come up Brown, excuse me, Broomfield Hunter Lane to get there.
This is open currently, because the right-of-way does go all the way to the property edge. Not to say that this property owner couldn't put up a gate, but for right now, they they have an interest in keeping it open because it's an exit for their clients. But if that were not, if that were not an option, then this would need to be median divided all the way to the center. then this would need to be median-divided, um, all the way to the center.
And, and of course, any timeline on Grinnell and BRT is, we don't know anything, because some of that is controlled by Raleigh. And also, the BRT is getting some federal funding, and the, the first project they're doing, I believe, is down New Bern Avenue, not this particular project.
We have, um, just to give you a little bit of an update on that, we have heard that originally the southern leg was gonna be potentially the third leg after the western that goes out to Cary. Um, but they've run into some issues that are going to cause that one to be delayed, so they are now looking at the southern leg actually being the second. I don't think we've got that quite confirmed yet, but that is the current, the current thought process.
I'll pass it to somebody else who has questions, thank you.
What is the latest information on the BRT route?
Pretty much just that. Um, we are looking at, Raleigh did endorse the, this alternative that would come down the Grinnell Street Extension. Um, so that is the route that we are pursuing, um, so.
I'm looking at Campo's draft plan that they published two days ago, and the BRT route does not go down a Grinnell. It goes down the new Wilmington extension, turns left onto Tryon, and then comes back over to 401 and then down. So how are we reconciling what Campo just published as their draft with this Grinnell Street route that doesn't seem to be in their plan?
So I'm, John, you may need to help me out here. I'm trying to remember what, um, Gabby presented to us as far as what we've endorsed, um, for that.
Both Raleigh and Garner have endorsed the, the Wilmington Street Extension, which would use existing Grinnell and then cross over on this path. Why it's not in sync with Campo, I don't know. I will say it would not be the first time that a fairly recently adopted plan did not make it into a, a plan that Campo had, but we'll check on it and see. But I know that, that that's what's been endorsed by both councils, and that's what's in the federal funding, um, proposal.
Yeah, 'cause we need to get that reconciled, 'cause they're out there publishing that this is not going down, that there is no Grinnell extension across Tryon. Um, the other problem concern I have is similar to what Mr. Singleton said with the eastern side of this property being in Raleigh, we have no control over the timeline. And with this ambiguity now on this Grinnell crossing, we have no idea what the in-and-out situation is gonna be in the future. If that, I'm sure the BRT, if BRT, if the route that they have planned goes, turns down Tryon, that intersection configuration is completely different than going straight across. And I'm not quite sure how you have BRT go straight across when you don't have a plan to make it a four-lane road. Or have no control over that.
Right, so the BRT, if the BRT comes first before any additional development, that project would have to pay and fund all of the necessary improvements. So the BRT project would then build the other two lanes, um, to complete the four-lane section. And then, um, the signalization recommendation, the only possible one that came out of the preliminary studies, was for it to be a controlled signal just to allow BRT to cross. So for general traffic, the most that that intersection ever would be is right-in, right-out.
Only way in, only two ways in and out of here would be Broomfield, and then all the way back to the loop, right?
And then it would, and then it would connect through to Garner Station Boulevard. So there would be working with the property owner there to condemn if necessary or take out whatever needs to be taken out to complete it all the way to Garner Station Boulevard. That would be part of the project as well.
Pass it to someone else, I've got a couple of.
Hey, Mr. Vance.
Well, yes, question in reference to the, uh, going back to Mr. Singleton's question in, in reference to EMS. When will, in the process, planning process, will EMS review the plans to find out if it's in conflict with them trying to get access to the facility? When is it, has it been reviewed by, uh, the police and EMS yet?
So it's been, it's been reviewed by both the Police Department and the Fire Department as part of the TRC review process, and so far, they've given, uh, they've given their okay.
What happens, Mayor?
Go back around, uh, Mr. Singleton said he might have a problem, or maybe.
Well, no, Mr. Dellinger touched on it, and I just have the concern of the, you know, we don't know when the BRT project's gonna happen. I mean, maybe three years, maybe five years, maybe 10 years. And you're sitting there with this, it really, I know it's got more than one access point out of there, but you really have a single access point. I just, against what we've tried to do in the past. I just have a lot of concern with it.
And that's why, that's why we've, we've stated it needs to either be, just like any other project, it's either gotta be median-divided until it gets to a point where there's two other points of access, or there needs to be something formally worked out for that second emergency point. So we, we share the concern.
Um, the other general concern I have is the concern we, I've had with a lot of these projects that are converting commercial into just pure residential. And I don't believe we need, and we need to start doing this analysis on this future revenue generation between commercial and residential. We're not making informed decisions on the impact on the revenue of the town and future taxation if we're not measuring the potential impacts of these types of rezonings. This rezoning itself is smack dab in the middle of, of commercial, light industrial, and then another, the east side, uh, the city of Raleigh, and we have no control over whatever they would do with that. I just can't in good conscience be supportive of just throw in this apartment right in the middle of, of commercial and resi-, um, and. Not great.
So, so we did talk early with, with folks who have been looking at this site uh, to consider, you know, vertical mixed-use, in keeping with site plan as opposed to relying on horizontal mixed-use. Quite honest, I think it's just a matter of timing right now on the private side. I think they, you know, there's some folks who have looked at it. They just don't think it would probably work right now, I think, if you would ask them. Um, but we did bring that up at the outset, and they've decided to go ahead and, and pursue this.
Hey, do we, do, do we have others who are planning to, um, speak to this issue, DM?
The applicant is here to give their, give their presentation and comment.
Okay, we'll be happy to hear from, uh,
I'm Tom Johnson with the Law Firm of Williams Mullen at 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh, on behalf of the applicant. And really, I'm just here to answer questions. You know, understand the concerns about where it is in relation to commercial, but typically, and then to help with traffic and that sort of thing, it's good to have some higher-density residential near the existing retail and commercial, because then it does cut trips. And with what you have around this already, uh, there's already a lot of commercial there. And so that's, you know, what we looked at, and what we looked at supporting that additional commercial development that's there. So that's where some of that was coming from. Um, you know, in terms of access, we were on board with the requirement that we do the median, uh, in order to meet that, that two-interest requirement. So we've had that discussion very specifically with staff about that, and are willing to do that. You know, eventually, the Grinnell Street's going to happen, whether it be BRT or what it may be, um, depending on what the adjoining property, how it develops, and it's using, uh, Broomfield Hunter right now as access, and there is an access to Tryon Road there. Uh, it's just someone else's driveway at this point. So we're accommodating what we can to get the two access points in compliance with the ordinance, um, so to make sure we do that. But ultimately, that flow will change, and, and we all realize that. But fires looked at this, rescues looked at it, everybody's on board with it. We've been through those discussions from the beginning. So I, I'm available here to answer any questions. I've got Adam Tucker here with Zimmer Development who's available to answer any questions you may have. So we're happy to, to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, so, start down here, Mr. Vance, any question for Mr. Johnson? Uh, this time.
Curious what the projected price point for these apartments is.
I'll let Adam Tucker speak to that, I don't.
Good evening, thanks for having us. Um, Adam Tucker with Zimmer Development. Um, we were actually also involved in the, uh, Timber Creek project, um, a couple of years ago. So this is not our first project in Garner, and I actually was the project manager for the Health Park at Timber Drive when I had black hair, a long time ago. But, so this is not my first time in Garner, and we've really had, had a great experiences here in the past. But to answer your question, we haven't decided what the price points will be just yet. We've run some performance, but I'm not ready to announce it because it's all market-driven, and with the way prices are now for construction, it's probably gonna be, I'm gonna tell you more than it'll probably be two years from now when this is built, hopefully, if, um, if prices come back to reality. But, um, so I don't have an answer for you tonight. Um, but I will say, back to your point about converting the commercial to, to residential, i-if you look at this site, it's gonna be very difficult, if ever, to do any commercial on this site, because you're not gonna have any direct access to Tryon Road. You've got 22% of the site is taken up with wetlands and stream buffers. Um, if the BRT never comes, which, you know, everybody thinks it is, but no one knows, um, you know, you're not gonna have any frontage, uh, in that back section. So it's, it's, it'd be very difficult to have a successful commercial retail business, uh, on this site based on the constraints of access and, and natural features. And we did everything we could not to touch those wetlands. Um, I think, uh, you know, we're gonna cross them with the culvert, so they'll be, you know, retained up there on the, between multifamily Area 1 and the active retail area, or the active recreation area. So the only place that we touch them is that very southern tip or south, plain south tip, where we have to have the connection for the Fire Department. Um, and it's a very minor, uh, impact. So we've, uh, we've been very diligent in trying our best not to, uh, impact any of the, the wetlands or streams on this site. But it's, from a retail standpoint, it, it'd be very difficult to be successful at this site.
Let me, let me answer, ask my question in a different way. Would a teacher with five years of experience in Wake County be able to afford one of your apartments?
I don't know, I don't know what a teacher makes in Wake County.
But you don't know if this is workforce affordable at all? You haven't done an analysis to know who can afford to live in your apartment?
If a Wake County teacher lives at Timber Creek, yeah, in, uh, you know, down at, at Timber Creek Drive, then yes, they can.
I wonder about this specific development. If our comprehensive plan on page 66 outlines affordable housing aspirations. So my question about the cost is related to who's gonna be able to afford to live there to support our housing affordability goals? Consideration to that.
Yes, sir, we have, it's, it'll be market-driven.
In Wake County right now, a lot of people can't afford market. So, can, I'll stop there, but consider that, because we got a real problem in Garner, and it's changed since you had black hair. No, it has. People can't afford to live here anymore.
I understand.
So you find out if someone who's making $40,000 after taxes can afford to live in this apartment, 'cause it's important.
Okay, we'll, we'll have that answer for you when we come back, for sure. We'll be a little further along at that point.
Vance, did I get to you?
Going around that way? I, I said I had no, excuse me, no, I have no questions for you.
Okay.
Just a comment, I know we've got a lot of growth coming up here and, uh, all around there, all down 401, uh, out east of us. And I know we've talked about affordable housing, but this is, this is, again, it is like any business, uh, it's market-driven. And, uh, with all due respect, we cannot dictate to these people what they're gonna have to rent these things for. They've got the investment in it, and it's very expensive. And I'm sensitive to affordable housing, I really am. We sat through that the other day, we had a presentation on that. And I think every community in Wake County's got this issue, uh, to deal with. And, uh, but, uh, I think we'd, we'd have to look at it in, in a different way. It'd be designated, so every project comes to us. We honestly can't dictate what they can, can sell their product for. It's, we're not in that business. So I just want to comment, and I understand what you're saying. And I'm sensitive to that.
I don't think, I'm not trying to dictate what anyone does. But we have a developer who's gonna do something in downtown Garner who has an eye to that affordability issue. So it is voluntary, but at some point, we're gonna have to do something and work with developers to help make these certain number of units available for work, working people to afford to live in Garner. They can charge whatever they want. But I'd like to have developers here that wanna help us solve this problem that is spiraling out of control. So that's my comment.
And I understand what you're saying, and, and I respect that. And I know we're looking at affordable housing. I'm just, it's just a comment on any development that comes in. That is not our place to tell them what they can sell their products for or rent it for. It's just, that's just a business-driven, and, uh, it was just a comment. But I am sensitive to what you're saying, 'cause we did have a good presentation in here last week.
It's a discussion of reasonableness, 'cause ultimately, that comes, what we have to decide. And I think housing affordability falls into the category of reasonableness, so.
Okay.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Mr. Mayor while they're here. Seth, or David, can you or Jeff pull up, uh, you, you showed a, uh, you had a, um, the zoning, one that shows what's the town of Garner's, uh, what we control, what is, right, there we go, back, they, back to the, uh, the red one. Okay, now that's what's the zoning, but this is the site. Oh, that isn't the, what, what is in red is in the corporate limits, right? But the corner of Tryon and Fayetteville there's in Raleigh, right? So this is why, and I know Fire and EMS and all that might have signed off, but Raleigh's got a station right down the road on Pecan Road, which gets here a lot quicker. Garner's got to come either from Station 1 or Station 3, come all the way down, go all the way to the Junction Boulevard, and come all the way around. I mean, that, that, that just, I'm sorry, that, this is not a good plan. If Grinnell was connected and had access, uh, or we had, of course, direct golf on our stations, but that's all, we're gonna run our elbow and get to our thumb if it goes all the way, if it's go all the way up there and come around to one of these units on the bottom, if, if, if there's a serious incident.
I do, if I'm, I'm not the fire chief or the police chief, but I think in the, in those kind of cases, the first response, you know, whoever can get there first, the inner cooperative agreements.
Mutual aid.
Yeah.
Yes, I know they have mutual aid, uh.
Okay, any other questions for these gentlemen here? Um, they've, actually, I guess I could say, um, thank. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it. Okay. From the, uh, applicant? Okay. Anybody else here to, uh, speak on this issue? Okay. Council, I believe you're aware that this is not the final, the final say on this matter. We've been asked to, uh, refer this to the Planning Commission for plan consistency review and back to us. Usually, uh, what would be the timeframe, Mr. Treesenberg?
It, yeah, it wouldn't go to Planning Commission until December. Um, so the earliest it could come back to you would be the first meeting in January.
So, um, any, any further comments, observation before I ask for a motion? Okay, um, you see before you the, uh, recommended action, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
May I move a request, CZSP 2101 be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency?
Okay. Question, comments? All right, the motion for you, so if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye? Aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, vote no. Okay, motion passed, by my calculation. And so we will, uh, refer it to the Planning Commission. And so we will refer it to the Planning Commission and expect to bring this back before this council. Probably in early January, okay? Thank you very much and thank you, counsel, for your inquiries and questions. All right, we have another public hearing, item two. PH Spring Drive subdivision CZ W twenty-one zero-two, and Mr. Bamford, you are up, I believe.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, this is also a conditional zoning request. With a subdivision site plan attached as a condition of the zoning for a, also a multifamily development. Case number CZ SB twenty-one dash zero-two, applicant is Stewart Incorporated. Owner is Springfield Development Corporation. This request is to rezone eleven point zero eight acres from office and institutional conditional use District ninety. Multifamily residential one. For the development of a fifty-nine lot townhome community at a density of five point three units per acre. County conditions are proposed that restrict the range of uses and there are also architectural conditions. Slides. This is a vicinity map of the reserving site outlined in black. The areas that are shaded in the light blue or gray are the areas that are annexed into the town's corporate limits. Start to the north, we have Garner Town Square up here near Highway seventy. To the south, we have Garner High School. Directly to the east, along Spring Drive, we do have some multifamily apartments, which were built in the nineteen seventies. We have residential single family east of the apartment site. South of the reserving site, we do have single family neighborhood. West across Timber Drive, we also have some single family neighborhoods. Those are not in the town limits, so they are at a lower density on Well and Septic. To to the northwest, we have the corner site, which was, came in about twenty years ago for a KNS cafeteria. That that is currently zoned service business conditional use. This area, we also have Greenbrier subdivision a little farther to the to the northwest. So that's kind of overview of the land uses in this vicinity. We'll we'll show you a couple of street views from Google. This is looking north west. We have Garner High School located here. This is a street stub out here into the reserving site, so this is Spring Drive. This is a older street view before some newer homes were built on this road, on both sides of the road. This is Spring Road from the Timber Drive side, looking directly north into the reserving site. A view looking southeast. This is Spring, I believe Spring Road going into the, going towards, going east High School. This is the intersection of Grove Mont over to the right and then Timber Drive going south. This is a zoning map of this area currently. Again, the property is zoned office and institutional conditional. Garner High School is zoned residential R fifteen to the north Garner Town Square. We have a mix of three districts, service business where Home Depot is. We have office and institutional where the old movie theater was and the school, I guess the school use is on that site now. North of there, where the main shopping area is, is zoned community retail. Directly to the east, we have multifamily two, where the apartments are currently located. The residential neighborhoods inside the town limits to the east and to the south are zoned R twelve, single family. And the neighborhoods that are outside the town limits on Well and Septic, within our jurisdiction, are zoned R twelve. This is a table of the zoning history in this area of Garner. Southside shopper down there near Timber. And Woodland Road was rezoned in nineteen eighty-seven. We did have Garner Town Square was rezoned in nineteen ninety-six. The KNS cafeteria site at the at the corner of Grove Mont and Timber was rezoned in two thousand and two. And the most recent case was from two thousand and twelve. This was the old movie theater site that was converted into a school use that was rezoned from commercial to off. I put a detailed zoning history in the staff report on the history of the site. That's under review tonight. In nineteen seventy-two, it was it was zoned residential R fifteen. And sometime between nineteen seventy-two and nineteen seventy-eight, it was rezoned to multifamily two for apartment. Nine, it was rezoned again to office and institutional conditional use ninety. Existing zoning office institutional conditional use District ninety-two. That was done in nineteen ninety-nine and the uses are fairly restricted to a few. Office, clerical, research services, libraries, museums, art galleries, art centers and similar uses. So the permissible uses are restricted to only those. This is a conditional use request, so the applicant is proposing use restrictions and architectural conditions. As part of this request, so the requested district is multifamily one, which is a step down from multifamily two in in density. Multifamily two allows around fourteen units an acre. Multifamily one allows just over nine units an acre. However, as part of this request, the applicant is proposing to restrict the density to six units an acre. So first off, the the uses would be restricted to townhomes only. So all other MF one uses would not be permissible on. MF one district does allow about twenty different uses, so those other uses would be prohibited. Number three, they shall not exceed six dwelling units per acre. Four, the development shall include an approximately nine thousand square foot community gathering space. That includes bench and picnic tables, seating beneath a pergola, a paver patio and a play lawn area. Five, each dwelling unit constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of thirteen hundred heater square feet. Six, each townhome unit shall have at least a one car garage with carriage, hardware and windows. Water heaters typically located within the garage will be removed from the garage area to provide more room for storage. So the water heater will not be located in the in the garages. Seven, the front facade of each townhouse unit will include the following treatments. A, a covered entry. B, at least three operable windows. At least the bottom sash of the window can be opened in one entry door. C, at least one two-foot horizontal offset per every two units. Eight, each townhouse unit shall include at least two of the following siding types. On the front facade, board and batten, horizontal lap siding or shake siding. Nine, each, I'm sorry, nine, in units shall have a masonry wings coating down the side or a trim board separating different siding. Ten, each townhouse group defined as a building containing four to six townhouse units. Shall include at least three colors, not including trim on the front facade. Eleven, shall have fiber cement lap siding. Trim elements such as windows, eaves, fascia columns and sockets may be vinyl or aluminum. Twelve, all residential building side elevations shall have at least two operable windows. Having minimum twelve-foot roof overhang on front and rear, I think this is twelve inches, is that? Is that right, Jeff? Twelve, twelve, yeah.
Yeah, twelve, yeah.
On in units of each townhouse group, the side roof overhang shall be twelve inches. Fourteen, six-foot solid fence to be installed along buffer to properties south of the development. And north of the development excluding riparian buffers. Fifteen, and lastly, the development of the site shall be completed in conformance with the approved subdivision plan. So the subdivision plan is attached as a zoning condition. Moving on to the neighborhood meeting, which was held in person on August the nineteenth. Approximately sixty-eight property owners within the three hundred foot notification radius. And the Optimus Club, and there were approximately ten property owners in attendance. And there were a few attendees who were outside of notice area. So those were listed on the sign-in sheet that was provided to us. Stop here and let Jeff pick up and go over the details of the subdivision plan.
All righty. For this project, again, we're looking at just over eleven acres. Under the MF one, the density max would be a hundred and six units. This master plan would cap them at fifty-nine. And there is a minimum width requirement of twenty-five feet. As with the last project, again, this was one that submitted pre one sixty D, so you're seeing again, a little more developed plan. Because of those old rules. This one would not have to come back for a special use permit, though, unlike the previous case. Just some things to point out here with this subdivision plan. As far as stormwater, they do have a wet pond in the northwest corner and a sand filter here under some guest parking. In the southeast corner. You have the riparian buffer through here and the dog park tucked into the corner right over here. The main community area with the other amenities will be centrally located here by the mini roundabout. The kiosk is also located on the north side, so they were pretty conscious about. Moving most of the community amenities to the north end of the property away from the existing single family. So the dumpster is located here. There is the access easement for the school, that would still be in place. And then a reminder that we do have the Timber Drive overlay, which is a twenty-five-foot undisturbed area, except for where it does need to cross for infrastructure. Part of the reason this does not connect here is one, I think some preliminary information is that DOT would probably not support that. Due to the proximity to Grove Mont. In the past, we have talked about the need where it's right in, right out only to be a certain distance from that signalized intersection. Where folks would make a U-turn to go the other way. So the existing intersection of Spring Road and Timber is approximately a thousand feet south of of that signal. There also is a pretty good topo difference through here. It drops off about probably seven or eight feet if I recall correctly. The water line, though, is being extended through. There currently is no public water in this part of Timber Drive. Springfield Development Corp, the current owner, does also own this little fragment over here. So it was a requirement from Raleigh to do that extension and potentially connect to another project. That is in review and could potentially be coming to you all the next few months as well, that it would connect to that project at Grove Mont and Timber. In terms of traffic and access at fifty-nine lots, the proposed subdivision did not require a TIA. However, to give you an idea of the estimates based on ITE trip generations. Fifty-nine units would generate approximately four hundred and thirty-two trips per day. That's two hundred and sixteen round trip. So each trip is an in and an in or an out. So you actually divide that by two to get an idea of round trips. The estimated AM peak would be twenty-seven. And the estimated PM peak thirty-three, so that's just in one hour. Spring Road's access onto Timber Drive would remain right in, right out. That was all preset when Timber Drive was built. And allowing that one thousand foot spacing to the light at Grove Mont Road. The three-legged intersection on the east end of the property would have a stop sign control for the southbound traffic. So traffic coming from the high school would have to stop to either make a left or right. The mini roundabout in the middle of the site, it's at the the high point of the site. It does help to provide traffic control and to mitigate the excessive block length due to the lack of access alternatives. And we've given a a look at the tree requirements, again, a sliding scale currently from twelve to fourteen percent. That has been met. The perimeter buffers would be a calculated thirty-five foot buffer. They have offered, as you noted in the, as David noted in the conditions, to do a six-foot opaque fence on both sides. In in return, having that reduction to twenty-four and a half feet. So we would be reducing width, but not the amount of material, the same amount of material would need to be planted. Again, the street buffer, we do have that twenty-five foot undisturbed along Timber Drive. And again, street trees required every forty feet. Terms of open space, ten percent requirement again. Proposing eleven percent between the riparian buffer and the adjacent dog park, as well as their formal area. I will note that there is also, the way that property is shaped, as you get to Timber Drive, it does go north. To the other outlet of of Spring Drive. And that is a just a common area that will largely be undisturbed as well. But was not put into their calcs. Other than the riparian buffer, there are no additional FEMA flood planes on the site. And again, this was the area that I was referring to right up in here. That will just remain common area. Nothing you can really do with that. Terms of the water and sewer infrastructure, again, being provided by Raleigh Water. The project would tie into an eight-inch water line here on Spring Drive. Would be extended through the site, stubbed out to Spring Road. And then also extended out to Timber Drive and extended both north and south to the edges of the property. Sewer line is an eight-inch tie-in as well. Both water and sewer would be stubbed out to Spring Road. Again, which David noted is outside the corporate limits and is an NCDOT maintained road. Again, as this moves forward to final preliminary plan, we'll again look at lighting for the streets and the common areas. Our preliminary look shows that they are in compliance for that. Stormwater management devices will be tightened up to make sure that they are sized appropriately. The water lines and hydrant spacing again, we get another review and the landscaping and parking would also be re-verified. They are providing with each unit one garage stall and one space in the driveway. And then the the kiosk and guest parking is provided in those few on-street spaces and the surface lot. So again, for the conditional rezoning next steps, again, the recommendation is to refer it to the Planning Commission for their comments on plan consistency. They would have then again draft their written statement back to you regarding that consistency. And then at that time, you would also need to take up the reasonableness of the action or of the request. And again, as I noted, the recommendation tonight would be to consider forwarding it to the Planning Commission. The applicant is here tonight. They have, I think, a a brief presentation. And I know that there's members from the public here as well. So please keep that in mind and we, David and I are here along with other staff to answer any questions you may have.
Sure, counsel. Have questions for Mr. Treesenberg before we get to the.
Mr. Dillinger?
A question on the one, the garages. How large are the garages? I know we talked about this extensively in the UDLR committee about the adequate, lack of adequate-sized garages.
Right. So we did have that discussion with them specifically in regard to whether or not they would be using rollout containers versus the dumpster. Given the size that they did have, we were not comfortable that they were big enough to accommodate the individual canisters. So the applicant did decide to go through rather than try to, because I believe they have someone lined up for this, they chose to go with the dumpster and locate it on that northern property line. Oh, yes. Thanks, David. And they also have relocated the water heaters outside of the garage to give it a little more space.
We get to it later. I'd like to know how large they are.
I think the applicant can tell you.
Yeah, because it's a consistent issue where your cars are getting bigger and garages aren't getting bigger, and your average sedan, even a Dodge Charger can't fit into some of these garages. So I'll be curious to see what, how big these are. Thank you.
I would hazard 11 by 19 or 20, but we'll let them.
Mr. Vance, anything?
Yes, no.
Ms. Dillinger?
Jeff, the intersection here at Spring Drive and whatever this is going to be called, this road through there, it's not going to be Spring Drive because Spring Drive is there. So you're saying there's going to be a stop sign where the current Spring Drive intersects?
Right here, from what I understand. Chris is nodding his head.
Just a lot of concern because that, well, this has not actually been like this the whole time. When I went to school there, Ford Gate and all that wasn't here, and there actually was like a little S-curve in here, and there was no stubout, and it was no curving gutter, it was gravel, and that's where you went to go do spinouts. But anyway, we won't talk about that. We won't talk about that. Anyway, I didn't get a ticket doing one, thank goodness. But anyway, my concern is, is that, I mean, you've been coming down there for years, and you put a stop sign there, and they're going to roll right through that stop sign, like, just like, I just, I look at that, and I know you say, well, it's a new road, they ought to get used to it. Well, I don't know. I just have a lot of concern about that because the intersection's been there so long that I don't know what else can be done other than putting that crosswalk there, making a raised crosswalk to make them slow down. But that's just, I'm just thinking of what's going to happen there because school buses drive it also. And they sling right through there now because you're allowed to sling right through there now. And I just, that's going to be a habit that's going to be hard to break for anyone. That's just a concern with, I see the flow of traffic, I just, I just think that's an accident bump up waiting to happen over and over and over again. That's all for now.
We'll certainly discuss that further internally.
Nothing's tall. I'm just concerned that my colleague did spinouts back there in those days, but I wasn't on one. There was nothing else down there, but I mean, that intersection, it was like a S, and it was nothing but woods.
Okay, back this way. Anything, Mr. Vance? Okay. Mr. Dillinger, you had your shot. All right, we will hear then, I guess, from the applicant at this time?
If it's possible, if we want to have the, any of the neighbors speak, then it may help me kind of address some of their questions during my presentation, if that makes it flow better.
We could certainly give that a try. And for those of you who are here, all representing the same concerns in the neighborhood, do you have sort of selected spokespersons that will present for you? That would be preferable, but we can give as many of you a chance to speak as possible, but we probably want to limit your presentation to three minutes or so. But ma'am, if you want to come forward and, yeah, yes, please, state your name and address. Just as you begin speaking, let me just get a feel, show of hands how many of you here in the common calls here this evening. So right over here. All right. All right.
I'm here too.
There you go. All right.
My house is there.
Okay, all right. Please proceed if you will.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ashley Kyle. I live at 5505 Spring Road. As you can tell from the map up there, my house and my property will be directly adjacent to this 11-acre tract that's going to be developed in the coming years. I am up here today on behalf of several of the neighbors from the neighborhood. Some of them are here tonight. Many of them were not able to be, and they did ask that I come to voice our concerns and to talk with the town council about the things that are important to us as residents of this community. So first of all, I just want to start by saying that none of us are anti-development, and all of us are very realistic in understanding that the growth of Garner is going to mean that a lot of our green spaces, and especially the area right behind our house, our houses, may eventually be developed. And so we're not trying to be obstructionists, and we're not trying to be unrealistic or unreasonable. However, this rezoning from office or institutional to multifamily puts the most burden on the people that live in that area. And it does that because the infrastructure and the streets and the area that we live in over there is not designed to house 59 new units with 59 new families. The picture that was put up on the screen of Spring Road, I have a couple comments of that, but the first one is that that road, the way the road looks now is very different than how it looked then. There are homes that are right next to that roadway. What you can also see on that picture is that that road is incredibly narrow. There's no infrastructure around it, there's no sidewalks, there's no curbs, there's nothing. It goes straight from that roadway into landscaped yards. And so I'm concerned that it has not been considered about the impact of the traffic that's going to be on that road. Our contention is that if it was developed for one of the other purposes that was listed out earlier, that would be a library, an art center, or even in the office or clerical institutions, that it would not create or generate as much traffic as in, as putting 59 new families would on this 11-acre tract. But again, we oppose the rezoning for that purpose. We're not trying to be difficult and say that we don't understand that it might get developed at some point. But moving on to our specific concerns, last Friday, I did send an email with a letter attached to the council members as well as to Mr. Bamford and Mr. Treisenberg. I also did attempt to send it to a representative from Stewart, although I think that that may have been...
We got it.
You did. Okay, thank you. It was returned to me. And I also sent it to somebody from Tryland Property as well, to make sure that everybody understood where we were coming from. And so I'm going to make the assumption that all of you have read that and have considered what our concerns are. And so I'm not going to spend my time going through everything, but I would like to make a couple of points. The buffer and the six-foot fence, that when you are outside, when you go out of my property and you walk along the side that's going to be neighboring this tract, and if you do it along any of the houses and the homes that live right there, within 10 or 15 or 25 feet of our property lines, there's very few trees. There's not a lot of that vegetation of the trees that we've come to like love and love living next to. There's not a lot in that small area. So when they talk about leaving a 25-foot buffer zone of existing vegetation, that's not really giving us very much. It's giving us space, but it's not giving us the noise mitigation, it's not giving us the light mitigation, it's not giving us the privacy, it's not giving us the sense of security that having some trees around our homes were giving us beforehand. And trying to replace that with a six-foot fence is not the same. So I noticed in the presentation that they're saying that the original buffer was 35 feet, but there's a 10-foot concession because we're asking for a six-foot fence. That, those two things don't compute. I'm not sure why a fence would be a replacement for 10 additional feet of undisturbed buffer between our properties and then the new development. The trees did provide and do provide all of those things I just mentioned, and a six-foot fence isn't going to do that. So we've been, we've requested that there be a 10-foot masonry wall put up in place of a fence, because that would actually provide some of the benefits that the trees provide for us right now in our homes. Our concern is that we are now going to have people 35 feet off of my property who are going to be able to just look directly into my backyard, and there's going to be lights shining directly into my backyard that I've never had before. And this is not just specific to me, it's for all of the people that live right there in that neighborhood. So the fence and the buffer are big issues for us. We don't think that that's unreasonable. We don't think that's too much to ask for. And the fences, a six-foot fence is not sufficient. A 10-foot masonry wall that is designed to be tasteful in appearance, it can go, you know, the residents can discuss what we would like that to look like. We feel like that is a much better alternative in addition to leaving the original 35 feet of buffer that was originally proposed. The second biggest issue for us is the Spring Road access. And this is not just a big issue for those of us who live on Spring Road. The neighbors that live on Old Buckhorn also share in this concern. And I mentioned earlier that I had some issues with that picture. My first issue being that it doesn't accurately depict the way that that street looks today. But the second issue I have is that that was a picture from Google Maps from 2019, and Garner's not a big area. Somebody could have easily gone out there and taken a picture to accurately show what that looked like right now, and nobody took the time to do that. And it makes me think that nobody's gone out there to look at the condition that the residents live in right now and how this actually might affect us. So I would ask that, at a minimum, the developer consultant be required to go out and provide some accurate representations of what this looks so that the council can make an informed decision going forward into how this could impact, impact the road. But also, the, having Spring Road be the only, or the, one of the only two places to enter and exit to this development, they're talking about that it's going to be 216 round trips a day, which is something like 30 or whatever in an hour. That might be true. It seems low to me. I, just logic suggests that if there's 59 homes there and two people live in each one and they both have to go to work, that that's already going to be a lot more trips than what they're suggesting. But let's just take it for what they say it is. The concern is that, right now, it's a dead-end street with six houses on it. The only people who drive on that road are the people who live there, and this is going to increase traffic exponentially on that street. And so the question that we have is why can't it go out onto Timber Drive? Why can't the entrance and exit be out onto Timber Drive? And Mr. Treisenberg has been wonderful in his communication, and he's provided explanations to the best that I believe he can, and said that the NC DOT has some rules about not being able to have an exit that close to another intersection. And I understand that could be a concern, but as he said here tonight, he said that the DOT probably won't approve that. So again, I don't think anybody's asked. I mean, I don't, it's concerning that we've raised this issue on a couple of occasions and no one's asked. And so, you know, if we could get somebody to ask and advocate on behalf of us, then that would be helpful. Another alternative could be a cul-de-sac. Instead of having two exits and entrances, there could be a cul-de-sac, coming in off of Spring Drive, going all the way to the end, turning around and going back out. There's no need to have Spring Road have the entrance and exit on that road. There's also just an access issue just in general to Spring Road, because to get there from Timber Drive, if you're going south on Timber, you have to go down and make a U-turn and come back around to get onto Spring Road. When you do that, if you drive down there right now, you will see that the home on the corner of where that U-turn is has their fence driven through. And that's the second time in a year that somebody has taken that U-turn too wide and run through their fence. And only imagine how much more traffic is going to be coming through and making that U-turn. It has been suggested that a primary exit will be to go out Spring Drive and not out Spring Drive, Spring Road, but I disagree with that, simply because Spring Road connects directly to Timber Drive. If you go out to Spring Drive, you've got to go around different backways in order to get to a main road. People are going to come out Spring Road, and there's too, that's too much traffic to be on a road that that's, that's that size. So we believe there should be an alternative. We have concerns that the alternatives have not been sufficiently investigated, and in our opinion, a more expensive option, just because something is more expensive does not mean it's not a reasonable option. Outside of the fence and, and in the road considerations, we're also concerned about preserving some of the trees in the area from a, from a environmental standpoint as well. And so we'd ask that there be a tree survey be completed if it hasn't already been done. We would like the trees that are to remain to actually be marked. I'm all too familiar with the fact that sometimes contractors go out there and accidentally, you know, take down a tree or do something they're not supposed to do. And so we'd ask that there be a tree survey, that it's very clear which trees are supposed to be removed and which trees are supposed to stay, so that the residents can know what trees will remain and we can plan for that, and as well as we can make sure that any future contractor does what they're supposed to do and doesn't accidentally take something down. I see that in the presentation that the location of the dumpster was notated. I appreciate that. That was one of our concerns, was that we don't want to have a dumpster on our side of this, of the development. And so we appreciate you guys taking that into consideration. Oh, one more thing I was going to mention about traffic. During the presentation, I also heard that there may be another development coming soon, straight up Timber Drive there on the corner. I can only imagine how much more traffic that's going to add. So when you talk about traffic on Timber Drive and people going up and down that street and making U-turns, it's only going to get, get worse. The last thing that I'll say is just, you know, again, we're not trying to be difficult. If this was to be designed as a single family, or to be rezoned as single family, where there could be 15 houses out there instead of 59, that's a completely different request. But having 59 homes in that area without, without the requisite infrastructure and being crammed into a small space, that's not why we live in Garner. I moved to Garner two years ago, like, my address is technically Raleigh, but I live in Garner for all intents and purposes, and I like to claim I live in Garner. When I moved here two years ago, I moved to Garner on purpose. I didn't move to Cary, I didn't move to Apex, I didn't move to North Raleigh, I didn't move to any of those places because I liked the green space. I liked the fact that it has small-town feel, that people weren't piled on top of each other everywhere you went. And that's how I felt in those other suburbs. By developing this tract of land and putting multifamily homes on it, that's how I'm going to feel here. And I feel like it goes against the reputation of Garner to have that sort of atmosphere. And, and we just request that you guys consider the things that we contained in our letter, and I appreciate your time and attention for us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kyle. Okay.
Hi, I'm Melinda Young. I live in the house that backs up to Timber Drive. We also just moved here recently. I am a 34-year retired teacher, and he is retired military. We moved to this area because our daughter is here, and we have a new granddaughter here also. We moved from a town that Aiken, South Carolina, that had lots of trees, and it was considered a city of trees, and they made sure that they kept that feeling in it, even though it's also a rapidly growing area too. So when I started looking for a place to move, I looked for two years before we moved, and I've looked at properties all around this area. And this was the one I liked, because it had the green space. You drive up Timber Drive, and there are trees, there's a big space between most of those houses and the road. We don't have that behind our property. We have it to the side of our property, however, and that was appealing to me. They don't show... They don't show anything about Spring Road and what it actually looks like. Our house is the one that's in that little, I call it a, that little perimeter area there, where he was talking about the lay of the land being low on that one side. That is the back of our yard also. It is a low space. It does sometimes flood up into the back of our fence. And additional, I'm worried about additional runoff coming into that. And it didn't perk. It wasn't a part that we could actually build on either. And then on the far side of our house, while that looks like a lot of room, that's where all of our septic goes. Those are our septic lines and all. So we, we liked that. We liked that we had a little space. That's what I wanted. And I just want to make that known because that's the reason we moved to Garner. That's the reason we chose it. Also, I'm going to repeat this, that U-turn for that many cars coming in and out is also going to back Timber Drive up, particularly during the peak hours. Because the turning lane that goes onto Elkhorn is not going to support that many cars coming in at the end of a workday. We see the traffic that goes down that road, down Timber Drive every day. Then when it does, if you look at that map where Timber Road goes in, it's not a straight turn-in, it's a curve-in. Cars are going to speed into there, and if you look right up above that, it's a, it's a blind curve that goes into Spring Road. So I am extremely concerned about speed and people coming in there too quickly and someone getting hurt. I'm also concerned because who's going to police this? Who's going to police not only the traffic, but the trash? Who's going to police the trash that's left on the road? And the parking spaces? We don't want to be a parking lot. And that's going to happen to us. We're really concerned about that. And I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what Ashley said. Please come look at that road, at how small it is. And the intended traffic of 59 townhomes, most of which will have two cars at least. If they have teenagers, they're going to be even more. We already, every single day, have someone who drives up that road thinking that it's a through road to Spring Drive on the other side. And they hit the dead end and turn around and come back out. But we have it every single day. It is going to become worse when it is actually opened up. And that little traffic turn is not going to keep the kids and everybody else from coming through to make a shortcut around to the backside of the school. And I just would like to voice those concerns. I appreciate you considering out, you know, what, how we feel. And would ask that you help us with some of these issues, if nothing else.
Okay, thank you very much. And so it's getting close to the nine o'clock hour, which is the time that we usually try to give the council a break. I think the neighborhood has been pretty well represented by these two speakers. And ordinarily, we wouldn't keep on with several more speakers unless you have a different viewpoint that you want to express. So I know the applicant is prepared, I guess, to respond to these concerns. But council, what is your pleasure? We can take a, about a 10-minute break now and come back and hear from the applicant? Or we can hear from the applicant first? Do you have a preference?
Let's keep moving on this, let's not break it up.
Okay. All right. You are representing?
Yes. My name is Craig Duer. To clarify some of the confusion, I was the original applicant working at Stewart. Steven Faber is with Stewart. He's here representing. In September, I left Stewart and I'm working with my own company, Land Alternatives. That's why the last email did not get to me. I apologize for that. But I've been working with the property owner from the very beginning. I was the one that, that ran the neighborhood meeting. But my, again, I'm Craig Duer with Land Alternatives. It's at 403 April Bloom Lane, Cary, North Carolina. I had done a brief presentation. I appreciate the comments. I don't, I can't recall, Allison, if we met at the neighbor, Ashley, excuse me, that we met. I know Ms. Young and I met. We had a very robust neighborhood meeting. And we, the whole purpose of that neighborhood meeting is to hear what their concerns are. And we heard their concerns. We didn't hear a 10-foot masonry wall, but we did, we did get the request on fencing and a bunch of other things. And a lot of things that they spoke to, we have tried to address. One thing you'll find out in development, DOT doesn't pick up the phone right away. You've got to ping them. So I sent like literally 16 emails to DOT over the last two months to get them to respond to the questions we talked about. And we did get a response ironically yesterday. But, you want to, Dave, just go to the next slide? So what I'm going to kind of speak to on basically two slides. One is kind of what I think is great about this project. But the second part of it's going to be about how we understand the concerns we heard at the neighborhood meeting and maybe some of the concerns staff has. But, you know, you kind of look at it two different ways. Hey, what makes this project great? Why did we even do this project to begin with? Besides what the concerns are, why did we do it? Now, number one, it's consistent with the future land use plan. Single-family development is not, unfortunately. We could not do single-family development out here with the current zoning. We could not do single-family development if we rezoned it because it would not be consistent with the future land use plan. What we're proposing very much is, it is absolutely intended to be an affordable-type product. It's going to be more affordable than the single-family. It's going to be a lot nicer than what you see along Spring Drive and apartments. We heard a lot about that at the neighborhood meeting. Technically, it's multifamily, but these are townhomes. These are for-sale townhome units. There's a lot of bells and whistles that staff has asked for the applicant to consider. We hope that we can still make that affordable. The whole garage discussion, Councilman Dellinger was a big one. 11 by 19 is what the dimension of the garages are, which, in my experience, is actually a large garage, for a single-family garage. But, you know, in order to make it affordable, we couldn't make the certain concessions that the town was asking us to do. The builder just got to a point where they just, they couldn't fit that in the house to make the garage any bigger. Just, it changes the whole price point of the house that we're trying to get at from an affordability. So we did concede and do the corral. We have a, will serve agreement with GFL Environmental. They will pick up trash twice a week. But, you know, we, we look at this as, as something that this area needs. You have the multifamily, you have the single-family, you have the schools, you have the parks, you have the shopping. It's, it, we've made it, we're connecting sidewalks to Timber Drive, we're connecting sidewalks to the school. We're sidewalks within the neighborhood to get to our, our public spaces, our dog park, which in my opinion, every dog park I do, I try to put in the woods because dogs don't like that little stepchild rectangle that you see in the corner that the developer throws. This one, we've kind of tried to create it in a natural area where it'll be a good space, it'll be away from the neighbors, it'll be a nice place to walk your dog to. So stormwater mitigation is a big thing that, that we work with staff early on. Basically, the site, if you look at that mini-circle on the site plan, that basically is the breakpoint, everything to the east of that goes one direction, everything to the west goes the other. So to the west is where Spring Road is, where Ms. Young lives. And she expressed a lot of concerns at the neighborhood meeting about her property flooding. I've expressed her at that meeting and it's included in our stormwater analysis that staff has, that we're taking a, I don't want to say a significant jump, but probably at least an acre of drainage that did go to her property is now no longer going to go to her property because we will route that to our stormwater pond to the north. So we're going to be improving the situation on her site. On the other side of the property, the town has asked us to upsize our stormwater device to treat the larger storm, 100-year storm event versus a 10-year, because there's existing downstream flooding concerns that all the neighbors were aware of. So again, when we develop the property, when we leave, it's going to be fundamentally better than what it is today as it relates to stormwater. Infrastructure, I just wanted to clarify one point. We are not required to make the connection because of this other piece, the other Springfield piece has got nothing to do with the zoning application. It was a request from the city of Raleigh late in the plan review process because they saw the other development coming, because they saw that would create a loop. So we agreed to add that additional connection and at just no expense to help the city of Raleigh and the town of Garner have a better water infrastructure for the entire area. And then economics, I mean, we're going to provide tax base so that you can hire, you can continue what you guys are doing and supporting your police force and, you know, contributing over $100,000 in fees for parks and recs to be able to continue to do great facilities. You know, maybe they can do something better at J.C. Park. I know it's a park close by to the neighbors and hopefully they can get some improvements with those dollars. So if you want to go to the next slide, I can kind of quickly point out some of those things. It's again, very much the same slide. I just kind of wanted to point out a little bit on, everything in green is going to be green. And it's more than the 24 and a half foot buffer, it's more than the 10 and a half foot buffer, it's more than the 10% open space. But the way open space works in the UDO, it has to fit a certain dimension, a certain size, a certain shape in order to qualify as open space. But it's still open space. Whether it qualifies towards the 10% or not, there's a lot of green space out there that we're setting aside. So I wanted to highlight that. You know, sorry, see, the stop control condition is something that, when we reached out to DOT, they immediately responded back. The neighbors wanted a traffic light there. That doesn't warrant a traffic light based upon trips and movements, but they did say there were skid marks from a council member doing donuts out there. So they recommended that a stop sign be put there in place. So that was a DOT mandated improvement. And that's something, when we brought that up to the neighbors, they appreciated that. So let's see what else on this. All right, we can go, we can go to the next slide because I think that's just more kind of an overview. And the intent of this slide is to let you see the green. What I'd like to talk about on the next two slides is just how we've heard what the neighbors have said. We've heard the considerations that, we've gone through five plan reviews on this with staff. Street connectivity, we talked about this in January at our first pre-application meeting. And nothing has changed in five plan reviews from staff. You know, yes, we've heard the concerns. We have to provide the connectivity. When the, when there's streets stubbed, public streets stubbed to your property, you have to connect to it. I don't have a choice, unless you guys tell me not to. But from a UDO standpoint, complying with the UDO, I have to connect to those streets. I don't have a choice. To the point where we were struggling with block length because it's a long, narrow strip with a school to the north and a neighborhood to the south. We're not going to stub to the north to the ball fields, we're not going to stub to the south to this person's backyard. So we worked with staff to come up with the mini-circle, which is actually a standard from a different jurisdiction that they allowed us to go with. That will provide both traffic calming and it allowed us to get over the hump without having to do a street stub to the south, which would have further gasparated issues. We've looked at cul-de-sacs. The cul-de-sac maximum cul-de-sac length in the town of Garner is 200 feet. So that doesn't really get me very far from a cul-de-sac. I can't do it. And then, most recently, the response we got back from DOT was, the district office does not, prefers us to connect to Spring Road. There's concerns about where the, if the road would stub out, that it would infringe upon the left turn lane storage to Grovemont. Not saying that it's impossible, but, you know, and we're months away from submitting driveway permits if we got approved, but we asked and asked and asked, and the response we got back is we prefer this connection. The other thing I would point out is, we don't have the ability to shut down the connection to Spring Road because that is a Wake County public school access easement. So is a very, we tried 20 different ways to get Wake County public schools to work with us on that piece that separates the parcel. But they will not give up the rights that that access is using. We have no control over connecting that. It's not, it's not even our property. So we tried. You know, the, the traffic is fundamentally less for what we're proposing. As, as David mentioned, our density could be much higher. You know, I, I've done a sketch plan on what this would look like with apartments and the apartment numbers that I could, I could fit on there. We have the comparison. I did talk about by right, without having to be before the council, we could do medical office. Both those uses would be fundamentally higher than what we're proposing. We're on the very low end of the density. We're at 5.3, I think, versus 6. You know, a TIA is not required, but we reached out to Dr. Bahang Wong with VHB, who's a very well-known traffic consultant. And he helped me get these numbers from probably the same source they did, but, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I relied upon Bahang. Want to go to the next slide, David? So, again, density, we talked about it. We're consistent with the future land use plan. When you do a rezoning, that's the first step. Are we consistent with what the town in, what, 2018, you guys did the Garner Forward Plan? It's relatively current, right? So they spent a lot of time figuring out what they want, you guys voted on it, what you want this town to be. And multifamily residential is very, there's pockets where you guys identify. It's not kind of like a, a large thing, it's a pocketed area. And this is one of the pocketed areas, which is why our client decided to put that under contract. They thought, hey, it's next to a school, it's got access, I can get water and sewer. This is a great site, I'm going to invest my time in it because it's consistent with the future land use plan. And quite frankly, at the time, we thought that townhomes was allowable in O-N-I. It wasn't until after, it wasn't even, it didn't get brought up at the pre-app meeting, it didn't get brought up at first plan review. There was a lag between first and second plan review that staff was able to find the old conditions. That triggered us having to go back and do a rezoning. So it was, we never even intended to do rezoning, we thought we had this easy. With the buffers, yes, it's 24 and a half feet. The requirement in the ordinance, or I don't know if it's in the ordinance or not, but the requirement is, the tree protection fence, if I'm going to count that 24 and a half feet as tree conservation, which we are, which means it's undisturbed, I can't touch the trees. Legally, I can't go in there and touch the trees. So that 24 and a half feet is undisturbed. It's not about whether or not we touch it or not, it's undisturbed. So when, normally, when you put tree protection fence, you put it right on that buffer. Town of Garner makes me put it 10 feet off that buffer. So our rear property lines of our lots are actually 35 feet from the property line, such that we have room to put the tree protection fence and still grade on the other side of it. So effectively, there is going to be 35 feet of buffer. That outer 10 feet may or may not be undisturbed, but it will be 10 feet. We are putting the fence 25 feet inside the property, or 24 and a half feet inside the property. So those trees that are on our property are effectively going to be in their backyard. And on top of that, we're going to be putting in, we have to comply with the buffer standard. And I can guarantee you, if I walk out there today, that the existing trees don't meet the buffer requirements. Because the buffer requirements have trees and shrubs. And in the middle of the woods, shrubs don't exist. So shrubs and fences, which are low, is what provides the sound buffering. Trees themselves don't provide sound buffering because the, the sound goes right underneath the trees. So by putting in the fence, by putting in the shrubs, by backing it off 25 feet, by having another 10 feet behind that, it's, it's a pretty robust buffer. As it relates to, one of the comments in the, about open space or spacing, you know, Town of Garner, again, we have 30 feet between our townhome units. Pretty much every other jurisdiction I work in, it's 15 to 20 feet. So these houses are not crammed up against each other, they're, they're pretty far apart. I think the maximum building strip is six units, which I think is where you guys are heading in your new UDO. You know, with the building setback, I say 50 feet, we're actually going to be 60 feet, 50 to 60 feet from the, from some guy's backyard to our property lines. There's effectively a 50-foot setback there. I've talked about the stormwater. The lighting is something that, that we heard from the property owners. And we've had Duke Energy do our lighting plan. There will be no spill and glare into theirs from the parking lot light. Staff did ask us to add a second light outside of the streetlights by the dog park. outside of the streetlights by the dog park for safety purposes. And then the last slide is kind of a, a big picture of, you know, what this site looks like from an overall big picture perspective. You know, I, I can't tell you that this addresses the residents on Spring Road's drives concerns. But anyone that lives on Old Buckhorn Road, nobody from this site is going to go through Old Buckhorn Road when they leave. They're going to go out Spring Drive. They're either going to go north on Spring Drive to get to the north. They're going to need to go east to get to Vandora Springs. They're not going to go down and then turn and go up Old Buckhorn and come around. So while I understand traffic, traffic will not impact anybody on Old Buckhorn Road with this development. Spring Road's different. I don't have a solution for that, you know, other than trip distributions that not everybody in this development is going your direction. So you take the number of trips, you take the number of units, half the people minimum are going to go to the right, the other half are going to go to the left. If we put an entrance in, people are still going to probably take the passive least resistance and make their first right rather than their second right. But we, we did talk about at the neighborhood meeting about traffic calming additional. And that's something we can work down the road with, but typically it's not something an applicant can commit to. It's more something that residents can petition to the town or D O T, depending on whose road it is, to add traffic calming. But I can't commit to traffic calming because emergency services typically doesn't like traffic calming unless it's warranted. But like I said, we've tried to, we've tried to take into consideration everything we've heard from staff through five plan reviews, everything we've heard from the neighbors through our meeting plus several communications from them. I feel like this is a really good project that is the right fit. It's the affordable fit. It, you know, I feel good about the project and what we're trying to deliver. And if there's any questions, I'd be pretty happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, sir. Then I'm sure there probably will be some council.
I'd make one more comment. Be quick. I have gone out to their site. I actually sent, I actually sent something to Ms. Young because she had a big veterans flag in her front yard. So I was sending her a message saying thank you for your service because the road, that picture does not do any justice. A, it's beautiful house. B, it's not a narrow strip road. It's 20 feet of pavement. And C, there's a sign at the end of the road about, about that this is a road. So it, 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 I should have sent, I should have added this photo there because it tells the picture, but I have been out all around the site and looked at it. So.
Mr. Vance, you, you have any questions?
In reference to the tree and, trees and, and sound, did you state that trees do not prohibit sound?
I'm saying that the putting in shrubs and fence at the lower level will provide additional sound mitigation as opposed to trees up high. It, it's taking trees away. It, it, there's an equivalent benefit of the shrubs at the low level where sound travels and a fence that blocks noise more than a tall standing tree.
This may be a far-fetched question, but was a noise analysis done to test, to test your theory?
No, but I can provide documentation on what a landscape buffer from a noise mitigation provides. But you know, no, we did not do a sound mitigation. So.
Finished time.
I think if you ask the neighbors if they prefer to see shrubs and fence, they'd prefer to see trees even if there was more noise. I surveyed them and every one of them talked about the height of the trees and how wonderful they are. Right? I'm glad you brought up affordability. Tell me how these are affordable and help our affordability problem in Garner.
A 22-foot single car garage, two-story townhome.
Okay, continue.
And we are looking to price them based upon, I think, what, the mid 200s, which in my opinion, addresses the question that if you're a teacher with five years of experience, that a $250,000 townhome is affordable.
You would commit to pricing some of them that way? There's not a
Can't commit to that.
There's not a single new construction townhome in Garner under 320.
We are, we did the market analysis. We presented that to the neighbors. I will admit, it's going to be a challenge with taking vinyl option away and having Hardy Plank and all the concessions that we've had to make to satisfy staff and what you guys have typically seen, makes it more challenging to build those townhomes more effectively, which is why we had to pull back on the garages. There, there's a limit to what you can do. So we're trying to make them affordable. It's something that we're trying to keep in that price point. We're trying to make it as small and affordable. That's what we feel works here. This is not a $350,000 townhome market. You know, we're not trying to build luxury townhomes. We're trying to buy nice, high-quality townhomes that, you know, your police department, you know, I don't know, lieutenant could buy. That's our goal.
$300,000 mortgage is only barely affordable for a family of only two, both making $40,000. Now, if they have a child, it becomes instantly unaffordable because one of them has to stop working or one has to stay home with the kid.
Understood. I actually had, I actually had the town of Apex, I actually had the town of Apex Affordable Housing Program speak to me this morning about what they're trying to do in Apex about affordable housing. And I embrace their policies and I'm sure you guys are thinking the same thing. And what we're trying to do here is going in that direction to the extent that we can.
I just want to admonish you against throwing around the word affordability. If you don't have the numbers to back it up.
Fair enough.
Yeah, we need to get other questions in. I can come back around to you, but just give some others a chance. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, just a couple of observations regarding the, the shrubs as opposed to the trees buffering noise. That is, I've had experience of that. It does buffer the noise more so than the trees do. Noise tends to creep along the ground. And so that's a, a good thing. But my question there would be who's going to maintain those shrubs because we all know that some of them don't make it. And then you've got a noise problem again because they haven't been upheld. And my other concern is, is that entrance, Spring Road from Timber Drive, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. And I can see high school students coming through there thinking they're going to get to the school the easy way. So I'm not sure. I don't have the solution for that, but I, I think that that is something that needs to be considered.
To answer the question, there will be a master H O A that will be responsible for maintenance of all common areas, which would include the shrubs you're talking about. And again, regarding access, you know, we've gone through five plan reviews and had five different emails and conversations with D O T about access. It's, I don't control access. I didn't put the stubs there. I don't, there's things I don't control that.
Understand that you can't control what D O T tells you. I'm just making the observation that the shortest distance between two points is a straight line and kids are going to drive through there. There needs to be some kind of education or something in place to deal with that because it's, it's, it's going to be bad.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, your chance.
Mayor, this is, I have concerns about putting an improved town standard project going through Spring Road, which is an unimproved road. Some of you may remember our longtime attorney, now retired, Mr. Anderson, worked for years to get the junk cars off one of those lots and did a good job. And now there's a nice home on that lot. Question asked the staff, where this road comes out and D O T will not allow it to connect to Timber Drive, how many feet between, between that and the light? Do we know? I'm assuming it's less than a thousand.
Yeah, it's about 600 or 650, somewhere in there.
This begs the question. It's something y'all may not know about, but I met with some staff last week about another townhome project which going down a road which shows it at 500 feet or so, 500 to 600 feet to another proposed stoplight. And I'm sitting there thinking, if that can be shown on a map and ride in, ride out, why the heck this one can't be shown on that ride in, ride out? I mean, that's, I mean, that's the question I have to ask. Now, the other one, as you said when we met, D O T may or may not have approved that. But it's a townhome project on a very busy road, a two-lane road, white oak road. I can't understand how one can show it and one can't.
To my knowledge, they haven't seen the other one because that hasn't advanced far enough for that yet. And I would just go back to what Mr. Dewar said is that they didn't say no, but if they have a preference and it's available, they're going to ask for the larger distance.
I'm not going to be able to, I can't close, we can't close access to Spring Road. We have to connect to Spring Road per the agreement with Wake County Public Schools. So it, it's still going to connect. And that's not a developer decision. That's a Wake County Public School decision. And we've tried 100 different ways to work with them and they are not bending, have not bent. And they, 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 they're holding on to that. They want that access. They, they do, you know, it's, it's not a negotiable item with them. And I don't, you know, like I said, D O T, their concern is, is, I can't speak to your other project, Councilman Singleton, that other project may not have had another option that was readily available and stubbed. So you know, that, that's why roads stubbed to properties is to connect to. And that's why we connecting to it. If, if that stub wasn't there, you know, we would be looking at a different scenario and, and we would have shown the stub there and we would have tried to work something out. But when we have to connect because of Wake County and we have to connect because of a street stub and D O T is telling us they prefer not, and we don't get the comment from staff, that's, that's what we try to bring forward as, as what we think is the, the best use for the site and recognizing that there may be some opposition to it. But it's, it's something that I have my hands tied on. It's, there are, there are logic to it, but I can understand the frustration with it as well.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything? Okay. Behringer, was there something else you wanted to pursue?
Not for the applicant, just a general comment that I, I think the zoning as it is, the permitted uses, it really takes away some opportunities to work, partner with the school system to do something back there that's compliant with the existing zoning. Land use map is land use map. People come in front of here all the time and change the land use map. That's what they do. But I think when you're talking about libraries, art centers, museums and all that kind of thing, and you're abutting a school property, a high school property, to me, there seems like a great opportunity there to partner with Wake County School System, keep an even larger buffer. If you look at the, the tree greenery, a lot of that is on, you know, it comes up to the neighborhood, but a lot of it is on the school's property as well. Then there could be other access points to that that don't necessarily even affect these neighborhoods. Just a thought. And again, it goes back to we were thrown away, really viable office and commercial real estate to cram in more homes. We not doing analysis on the benefits of it and that's a problem.
Okay, we've spent some considerable time on this and we'll spend what we need to, I suppose, but go ahead, Mr. Vance.
Yes, going back to the, the noise, the noise question relative to the trees and the shrubbery, did I hear you mention about a wall being placed? The neighbors had requested a 10-foot wall.
Is that being considered?
That is not being considered.
Say again?
It is not being considered at this time. When we met with the neighbors, we asked them what they would want. They did not ask for a 10-foot masonry fence until we received the letter the other day. We talked very clearly with the neighbors that we could get a six-foot privacy fence. Putting, building a 10-foot masonry fence, the amount of disturbance to build that, I'd be taking out just as many trees to build a 10-foot wall with the foundations of that wall. A fence, I can put a fence right next to a tree. You can't put a wall right next to a tree. You got to take the tree down. So it would be more intrusive to build a masonry wall than a fence. And the intrinsic value of it, to me, doesn't warrant it. But again, that's, that's my opinion as a professional engineer. And quite frankly, it's consistent with what we talked about at the neighborhood meeting. So I, and I've never had that in my 25 years of practicing, have someone asked me to put a 10-foot masonry wall. I've had the buffer concerns and traffic concerns and access concerns. But I, I think we're working with the neighbors with what we represented when we got together with them and what seemed to be receptive. They may have asked for an eight-foot fence, I think, at one point. But the height of that fence is, it, it's the solid buffer that provides the privacy and the noise. It's not the height. So we're trying to be reasonable with what makes the project, I'm sorry, I'll say it, affordable. The more we throw at it, it's, this project started at 85 units. We're down to 59. So it's, it's a challenge to make this project work. And we're trying to be sensitive and, and I think, you know, there's things that we can talk about with the developer about increasing the buffer to 35 feet from 25, but that's something that I have to go back to the developer on. That, that was a, the, the fence was not in return for the buffer reduction. The buffer reduction was a planning director administrative reduction. It wasn't something that was tit for tat. We added the six-foot fence that specifically at the neighbor's request.
Okay, Mr. Vance, if I need to come back here, I think Singleton, you had a follow-up.
Undisturbed has a lot of benefits, but a berm or vegetation, what I would prefer, but that's when you go in there and take everything out. But in the long run, that looks a lot better than an eight-foot or six-foot fence because you get the vegetation on there, mix of vegetation. You get it at six feet up in there, four, four to six feet up in there, but I don't think that's an option.
It takes out 20 feet of trees.
Yeah. I will say that just as the neighbors, I'm not saying this is on pro or con, but when they did show the study that some, in some cases, O N I and retail uses generate more traffic, that is true because we've seen it on all the projects. However, it showed a 50,000 square foot medical building and they're not going to build a 50,000 square foot medical building back there. They might build two or three, 10,000 square foot buildings. So it wouldn't be that. But it, but they do generate, they can generate more traffic in a short period of time.
They have parking lots and they have parking lot lighting. I mean, you have a sea of asphalt in buildings.
There's pluses and minuses to having that type of zoning there too. But the, the neighbors have raised very many concerns.
They have. There's a lot less greenery on a commercial development than there is on a townhome development. So.
Anything else, Mr. Matthews?
I have nothing. Everything's been pretty much discussed, Mr. Mayor.
At least. Ms. Behringer?
I like the project except for that, the Spring Road situation. I understand that D O T can tie your hands and I don't have a solution for it. But I think that, that is, it's just not, it's not smart. It's just not smart.
Down here, Mr. Behringer?
The question about the U-turn and the traffic on timber, that, that is a concern too. And would you need to look and see if there's enough holding space if, because people are going to make, come down timber and try to make that U-turn to get back there. They're not going to try to go up 70. Nobody's going to try to do that. We do need to kind of look at that with the number of trips that are going to be generated and kind of anticipate what time of day those are going to happen and what kind of problems that could cause on timber. The other is some type of, and this will be hard for Spring, I was getting confused, Spring Drive, the long one, wherever the long one is. That's a wide road that people speed down already. That's an existing concern. It's a harder one to concern, for the community to address because there, don't believe there's H O A over there. So organizing them in a way to get traffic calming on that road is going to be a challenge, but this would make that, you know, worse. Those are my two traffic thoughts and things we, I think we need to look into.
Anything else, Mr. Vance? It's understood by all that it closes this meeting this evening. No final decisions be made. Be referred to the planning commission. I realize these questions are important going forward. Final disposition, right? Anything else from you two gentlemen?
I'll just, I'll just say that we'll need to dig into more of these questions as we move forward to planning commission. Just to mention, one of the things is that we have our own height limits on fences and 10-foot solid is, is not allowed. So I will need to look at what could be allowed, but 10-foot is, is not even permitted. So, but we'll, we'll get answers to those questions going into planning commission. So they can understand all the nuances and then have those for you as well when it comes back.
Counsel, have you exhausted your questions on this? And let's see, applicant doesn't have anybody else, you've heard from everybody, is that right? Okay.
Do you need to make a recommendation, I mean, make a motion?
I think we're, is, we're ready for that, unless anybody's got any other concern they feel like hasn't been aired, but I think we've aired them all, so a motion is in order to refer it to the Planning Commission.
I move that we, rec, excuse me, that we recommend, I'm sorry, backtrack, let's see here, that we refer CZ SB 2102, I'm sorry, kept saying recommend, to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded, I believe all discussion's probably been exhausted, but if there is any, now's the time to voice it. Here, ready to vote? If you're in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed to the motion, vote no.
No.
Okay, it's noted there's one vote for the, motion is approved and is so ordered. To all of you who've taken part this evening and those of you who've listened, I suppose, thank you for your patience and for your courtesy to each other. These aren't easy decisions, as you know, and I appreciate the efforts of all involved, so, and we'll come back before, probably not before January, is that right, Jeff? Okay.
I think enough questions have been raised, we might not see this for a while.
At any rate, thank you all, and I'm going to, at this point, call a 10-minute recess and we will come back and pick up with the agenda under new and old business, I believe we are at. So adjourn for 10 minutes, please come back timely if you will, so we can move along. Okay, I call the meeting back to order and we will pick up on our agenda where we left off, we're now under new and old business, and I'm going to recognize our town engineer, Mr. Chris Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This next item is regarding the 2022 annual resurfacing contract. As you know, we always bring to you the street list in the fall, right before the holiday season, and we plan to advertise this project after the, the Christmas and New Year's break. So just to refresh, on the annual resurfacing budget, the total budget for each, for this year is 1.22 million, which is comprised of a combination of the motor vehicle tax revenues and the Powell bill revenues. Similar to last year, we have split up the monies between 60%, roughly 60% going towards the annual resurfacing budget and the remaining 40% going towards the preservation budget, which is handled by Public Works. So for this year, our street resurfacing list, we have a total of around 21 streets included, around nine or 10 subdivisions that could make up that list, and it's a total mileage of approximately 2.42 miles. So just a couple pictures that we have for you, the first being the area, you've got NC 50 over on the right side of the screen, so we have Foley Station, which we've got several streets in here that have been resurfaced a couple of years ago, and, and this is getting most of the remaining streets resurfaced, and then we've also got Southview subdivision across the street, this would wrap up the remaining streets in Southview, some of those streets were also resurfaced a few years ago. Then also, we've got some areas in the Forest Hills Meadow Brook area that are also being Then over in, near the Greenbrier area, we've got Pinewood subdivision, we've got 2 streets right there in the middle, oops, sorry, right there in the middle of the street, or middle of the map, 2 streets there. Then on the north side of town, north, near North Garner Middle School, we've got a section of Powell Drive. And then over more towards the Vandora Springs area and Timber Drive corridor, we've got 3 neighborhoods, Woodlands, Sunset Ridge and Woodland Forest. So a few streets here, Forest Manor Drive, and one of the cul-de-sacs there off of Woodland Road, and then the Elkhorn Road section right off of Timber Drive.
Just could you go all the way back to the first slide? I don't want to be petty, but I wanted to, I saw, I thought just, well, go back to the first map.
Oh.
Sorry.
That one.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out the, the, the very small little road way down at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I missed it, it's so small. That is Staunton Meadows, so that is 1 street that is just outside of Southview, thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what that little short street was.
While, while we're at Southview, that one was also in similar conditions, go ahead and knock it out while we're over there, try to reduce our mobilization costs.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. So the next steps would be the advertisement, which we, we do when we get back from the New Year's break, bring back a, have the bid opening and bring back it for council award in February, and then go through contract execution in hopes to begin construction by March, and looking again, similar to last year, about a 3 to 4 month contract that would finish up around August. And so while we're here, I just wanted to give a quick plug for the new pavement management map that we talked about with council, and so residents are able to look at this information that we've made available. First, we get a lot of calls from time to time with residents who are looking to find out where their street is on, in, in as far as the score and how it compares to other neighborhoods or with other streets within their neighborhood. So any resident can go to the www.garner.gov, and if they go up to the, the search bar and just type in the word "street maintenance," then it'll be the very first link that they can click on, and then that will bring us to the street maintenance page in this area where they've got new GIS tools available, they just click the pavement management system map, and that will bring them to the town's new pavement management system interactive map. So they can zoom in on this, click on any street that's in the town limits, bring up information that not only talks about the pavement score that they've got, but also we're tracking the last date and type of street maintenance that's been done on our streets, so that they can actually, if they move into a new house and want to get information on things that may have happened in recent years, they can do so. So just wanted to put that out there. So our recommendation tonight is for council to consider approval of the 2022 resurfacing street list as presented and authorize staff to move forward with advertisement of the project for construction, or for advertisement, excuse me, in January 2022.
Okay, question for our town engineer, council members, anybody down here? Okay, if there are no questions, the comments, a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I move that we approve approval of 2022 street list and authorize staff to advertise the project for construction in January 2022.
Okay.
All right, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And there is no opposition or vote no, and the motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, let me see, your, yeah, assisted engineer is up next, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your patience.
Of course. We should be fairly brief on this one, so tonight I'd like to talk to you about the Aversboro and Garner Road sidewalks projects, as well as an on-call street and sidewalk contract with SEPI Construction. You saw a similar, similar presentation from Chris at the last council meeting with another consultant for the project on Bryan Road, so we will, we'll be brief through some of that repeat information, but a similar idea. So our, our brief agenda for tonight is just the request for qualifications that resulted in this on-call agreement. Aversboro and Garner Road sidewalks are the projects we're looking at, understatement of work number one, and our staff recommendation for you tonight. We had a request for qualifications advertised on April 1st, 2021, and received 19 proposals. The engineering and planning staff reviewed those proposals and selected 3 firms to provide on-call street and sidewalk design services for us, and that was RK&amp;K, SEPI, and Kimley Horn and Associates. The firm before us tonight is SEPI, which was one of those 3 firms. We have drafted a master agreement for professional engineering services with them, which has an initial 3-year term with the option to extend up to 2 additional years. There are specific resources and responsibilities are outlined in the statement of work, which acts as a supplement to the master on-call agreement, which is a, a general agreement to provide services. Compensation and scope of services will be included in each specific statement of work that we provide for that consultant. Contract that we are looking to execute with SEPI for design is for 2 sidewalk projects within 1 contract, the first being the Aversboro Road sidewalks. This is to install new sidewalk along approximately 0.17 miles of the west side of Aversboro Road. This is basically from just north of Berryfield Lane to the sidewalk north of Xenia Lane, where the YMCA is. So it will connect the sidewalk south of Berryfield to the sidewalk at the YMCA, filling in the gap there on Aversboro. It provides connectivity between those neighborhoods, as well as White Deer Park just to the south and the YMCA and adjacent businesses.
I'll give a connection all the way down now on that side to Lake Vincent Park, is that right?
Right. The second stretch included in this contract is for the Garner Road sidewalk. This includes improvements along West Garner Road, from the Vandora West neighborhood, near Vandora Springs Road, to Weston Road, and this is on the north side of Garner Road. This section includes sidewalk, it also includes some curb and gutter in areas, as well as some pavement in areas that it's lacking. It's not a consistent section through there now, so it will basically be making a uniform section in an effort to achieve our ultimate section, which is a 3-lane section through Statement of work with SEPI to provide engineering services for these projects includes topographic surveys and subsurface utility engineering, engineering design, including the roadway, storm drainage, street lighting, traffic control and erosion control, public involvement, utility coordination, permitting, any permitting required, such as from NC DOT or NC DEQ, right-of-way and acquisition exhibits, as well as final plans, construction estimates and bid documents for us to be able to solicit construction bids for the projects. Compensation is, for basic services, is $139,064.30 to provide the engineering services for these 2 projects. Alternate services in the amount of $11,340 for a maximum not to exceed of $150,404.30. The alternate services that were included are minimal on these projects, these are services that we don't necessarily expect to need, but we have them included if we do need them, but we will not pay for them if we do not. And that includes vacuum excavation, which is a subsurface utility location, restaking of right-of-way if the, if the stakes come out or the easement points, and isometric visualization, which would be kind of an enhancement of the display materials that they would provide for public meetings and things of that nature. Staff's recommendation tonight is to consider approval of the on-call master agreement with SEPI, which is our standard on-call master agreement, and was included in your packet. Statement of work number 1 for Aversboro and Garner Road, and authorize the town manager to execute these contracts in the amount not to exceed $150,404.30 to provide engineering services for these sidewalk projects. Questions?
A quick question for you, and maybe it was stated at the beginning of your slides, I'm not sure, the, the order in which you presented those projects, was, was that establishing any priority in terms of how they will be built out or not necessarily so?
I, I wouldn't say necessarily for construction, we've, we're basically treating them as 1 project, just with 2 different locations. So I believe the intention, the intention for the design is to have them complete it all as a comprehensive project, and we'll likely bid it out as 1 comprehensive project as well, which will hopefully save us on some of the mobilization and the repeat costs between the 2, we'll have them done at the same time.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Harrison? Phil, Gray?
Yes, you stated on there, had to be done later than July 1st, 2023, but I'm looking at something on our, our agenda packages, this is December 31st, 2023.
July 1st is what we had discussed, and it could be, I think it potentially could be sooner than that for the, for the design as well, but we had put that date, but we can amend the agreement before, before signing that.
The sooner date, correct, the earlier date, July?
Correct.
Okay. Because I, July 1st, 2022, because that's next year, but anyway, yeah, but, but it does say, I mean, it's just time performance, right, I'm sitting here reading it, so, so July 1st is the, is the date it's supposed to be completed? These projects are supposed to be completed, okay.
Completed with, with the services that SEPI will provide, so not the construction complete, but that would be completed for their engineering services.
Okay, thank you.
Questions down here, Ms. Barringer?
For construction, I, do you recall right off what the construction estimate was?
I don't have that information offhand, but we did look at it, so I, I mean, we can provide that information to you. Yeah.
Kind of scale, how much these sidewalks are expensive, and I'm not quite sure how expensive they are.
They are, not only because of the market today, but also the, just the fact that you still have to go through all the same processes that you do even for a large-scale roadway project, so, yeah. The old, the old rule of thumb that 10% for the design, based on the 10% of the construction cost, doesn't fly on these, it just doesn't. But, yeah, we can, we can forward that to you.
And if you got to get right away.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's good, thank you.
With 1 plus on Aversboro Project, your curb and gutter is already there, it's, that's the 1 plus on that particular one versus Bryan Road and versus part of Garner Road.
Vance, do you have anything? Okay, so, all right, you have a, for you the recommended action, motion would be in order at this time.
May I move the authorized staff to execute the agreement with SEPI in regard to design services of sidewalks, stated in the proposal.
Seconded.
Be properly seconded, council, if you're ready to vote, if you favor this motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, vote no. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Harrison and Mr. Johnson, both of you, sure enough, we'll look forward to getting that work underway as soon as possible. All right, we are now at committee reports, there's 1 here, the FIRE MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. I suppose I will call on the town manager and I'll perhaps make some comments. Go ahead and update us, Mr. Manager.
Yes, that's on here, just want to let you know that discussions still, still continue with the Garner Fire and Rescue on potential merger and the MOU agreement we would have with that, and that we recently met last Tuesday, I believe it was, and there will be a report coming to council over the next couple of weeks or so, hopefully. I sent out an email, so hopefully you can give me your availability, and we can get the consultant to brief you on the, some of their early findings, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, yes, that's, process has been underway for some time, I've been on it from the beginning, I guess. We still have some, we still have some coverage yet to do, but we're, we're making it go slower than I'd like to see it, but that's just my personal opinion, but at any rate. Okay, anybody have any questions there? You will be hearing further about, I guess it'll be a special meeting and we will get some additional information from the.
All right.
All right, I don't believe there are any other committee reports, am I right on that, anybody here, here, okay. Managers' reports, and Mr. D- And Mr. Dixon, we'll recognize you again, sir.
You have Garner info in your packet, also a building and permit report. I'll skip over number three for now. Number four, the fire board appointee, your current appointee Nancy Anderson, term ends in November. So at this time, you would want to consider reappointing her or if you want to bring any new nominations to the floor, you can. So just let us know what your desire is, we'll have to do that, you know, of course, in an open meeting. So potentially could do that at the next meeting.
Any reason why we couldn't or shouldn't do it tonight? I mean, I'm not trying to rush it, but I think the term technically, is it already expired, Ms. Gibson?
End of the month, or is it? Okay, 18th.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, it's, it's never, and-
After this meeting? You had 18th, okay.
I mean, she's, she's been, of course, working with the MOU committee and has been involved with that from the beginning. I would recommend that we reappoint her. But if council wants to wait till the next meeting, we could, but like-
It's whatever you desire to do, you can do it.
Did you have a desire to stay on?
Yeah.
Okay. I seen any reason to wait, Mr. Mayor?
I know there's some thoughts about with the, working through the MOU and what we've done so far, some consistency in not having to get a new person up to speed and, because it's fairly complex and we've gone a long way, we've still got a little ways to go, but we've gone a long way.
In the form of a motion, Phil, or?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, I move that we reappoint her for whatever that tenure would be, is it two years or?
Two years, yes, that's correct, yeah.
Reappoint her.
Two-year staggered term, yes.
Right, you heard the motions are second?
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we reappoint Ms. Anderson to, to next term. So if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, vote no. And there is none, so we'll notify her of council's decision on that, and thank you, council, for that. All right.
I, I have several more.
Okay, go ahead.
They're not listed in here, but I'll, I'll run through them pretty quick. I just want to remind you of some of the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources events that are coming up. You have Deena Carter, so on Saturday, November 20th, at eight o'clock, I think that is Saturday, right? So there'll be a concert. And then on November 26th, we have tree lighting slash night market. The night market starts at 5:00 and the tree lighting will be at 6:00 PM. So right there near the Recreation Center, Garner Recreation Center. You got information about an IT equipment rollout, some new equipment that's, council will be getting, so that's going to happen before the next council meeting, the next work session on Tuesday. So it would be good for you to attend that, so you can get oriented to your new device. Fairly soon, we will have a park planning meeting for the Meadowbrook and Jurgen Parks. We have been doing those as special meetings and we can continue to do that. So just give me your thoughts on that, or whether you just want to do it at a work session, but it might be beneficial to do it the way we've been doing it, but it's up to you. So we can, we can send out some options for that, if you prefer to be there.
I think there's merit in carving out time for a special meeting with, with, with some of the things we need to consider.
That'll be looking at some of the phasing. You look, you saw the 30% design, but that'll be looking at some of the phasing and maybe some of the cost estimates, so we can make some more informed decisions about how much to do and when to do it. Now that the bond to pass. All right, the Depot Grand Opening is Saturday, November 20th, and that'll start at 2:00. I think it's going to be an open house from 2:00 to 5:00, but the actual comments will, will start at 2:00. So going back to item number three, Mr. Hodges is going to pass around a series of documents here that are clipped together, and what you have here is staff's preliminary recommendation for use of the ARP funds, American Rescue Plan funds. With the caveat, and I'll probably say this a few times, the, the guidance is not final. This is just kind of some of our best, I don't want to say guesses, just real, informed designation of what to use, how to allocate some of the funding. What we looked at, we looked at the various areas for funding. We looked at some of the needs in town. We looked at areas where it could kind of touch several different areas of town. And when I say areas, I don't really mean geographic, but I mean just different programs, different ways it could help, in multiple ways. And so we kind of spread it out in different ways. It's going to allow us in some areas to, to get into some, get into some things that we have not previously, you know, been in our programs. So we have that. Now, just mind you, this is based on the restricted guidelines that are in place now. There is some talk about having some unrestricted, unrestricted funds, and should that happen, we may reallocate some dollars to some different projects. We tried to also put some money toward some plans that we already have in place, some projects that we know we want to see finished now, that are already in the CIP or some other plan. And we also, like I said, put some new things in here that will allow Garner to, like get into some areas that we hadn't previously been into too much. So with that, we know there, you know, we're going to try to leverage these funds the best we can to, you know, multiply them in some ways, working with our partners, but just recognize the amounts that are here is what we're putting toward these project areas. This in no way means this is the, the total amount it will take to complete these projects. We're just putting dollars toward certain things, certain types of infrastructures or certain type of programs. So, so just look through it, let us know what your thoughts are. If you have questions, we, there are some things, there, there's some more detail that we do have about them, but we just didn't include the detail because we don't want to really point out certain areas and then it not happen. So, but there are some areas in here that may have more detail that we could share with you. And like I said, this is, this is all preliminary until we get final guidance. So I think this is kind of what the council was looking for, so if you have any questions or thoughts about it, just let us know.
Well, without trying to speed along too much, do you think it would be too soon for us to, you know, come back to this at the work session and sort of sort through? Perhaps give some prioritization to some of these items or at least have some discussion amongst council members regarding their initial reaction?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because that would help staff narrow down what areas you kind of want to get into and what some of the priorities are. So I think of the a joint work session with planning, with the UDO, and then there's, I forgot what the other item is there, there's an item, but I think there's, there'll be time.
Time to spend some time on this.
Yeah, there'll be enough time to spend on this. You know, we didn't have a lot of revenue loss, hardly any, so, you know, we don't have anything associated with that. There are some other areas that we did not put funds into. It's harder for us not having human services and those type of things to try to figure out the COVID health impact on the community. But there are some things in here that we think will be, be beneficial to the community at large, so.
All right. What else, Mr. Manager?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I do have a note here. So we will send that electronically because this, the document we sent you just, or just passed out to you, does have some links you'll see in blue, and you can click on those and go to those, those websites, so. You do have that, and what you have here, you have a preliminary document, then you have a PowerPoint based on one of the presentations we gave you earlier. Like I said, of several different links and more information that we got through the School of Government, some of their webinars. So.
All right, that's probably a good first stab at this anyway, and I realize there's still a lot of unknowns that we'll have to sort through moving ahead.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I'll recognize our attorney who has an item here and we'll definitely close session, but go right ahead, Ms. John.
Yes. So there was a large bill to do criminal justice reform that passed in early September. What, it does three things mainly. One, it talks about decriminalizing local ordinances, and I'll talk to you about that. It also requires more data collection and reporting, and it requires the changing of certain standards and policies of the police department. Those, the data collection and the policy changes will be phased in over some amount of time, but the presumption has always been under state law that if you violate a local ordinance, it is punishable as a misdemeanor, generally a fine and up to about 30 days possible in jail. That presumption will change on December 1st and will be flipped. So basically, now if you want any violation of a town ordinance to be punishable as a misdemeanor, it will have to be specifically stated in the ordinance. And so today, there was training from the League of Municipalities that basically, like we have now, is a catch-all provision that says any violation of any of the code of ordinances is punishable as a misdemeanor. This might be in addition to civil penalties that could be issued for things, you know, like trash collection and, and some other things that we're currently doing, animal control by civil penalty. And then state law also said there's about eight categories of things that you cannot, that the town cannot enforce criminally, and the, the largest of those areas is planning and zoning laws. With very few exceptions with respect to unsafe buildings, those no longer can be punishable as a criminal offense. So what I'm going to do is, I'm just briefly introducing this for you tonight. I plan to bring it back at the work session, but what I'd like you to, to think about, one is how much of the ordinance, of the town ordinances do you want to punish or have the option to punish as a criminal charge? That is a deterrent effect for certain people. I've asked for the input of the Garner Police Department. For instance, there are situations where you have to have that ability to arrest someone in order to remove them from the situation, if they're disturbing the peace, if they're creating loud noises, things like that, that are not criminal statutes under state law, but situations that come up, aggressive panhandling, certain disruptions, say to a public meeting, the ability to be able to take people out of the building, for things like that. So we're doing an analysis with the police department on what their recommendations would be. So there's the philosophical of, do you want to have that option to criminally enforce your violations of the town ordinances? The second issue is whenever you do use criminal enforcement, even as an option, if it's in your code of ordinances, even if you, they never write a ticket or make, or do charges on these, any fines that you collect under that as civil penalties technically are to be remitted to the Wake County Public Schools under the North Carolina Constitution. It's not clear to me how much the town has been doing of remitting that, because it's not clear how much we're collecting in fines that have a criminal punishment available. So that's also something to think about, is that where you do have criminal enforcement, you're not, the town is not able to keep the clear proceeds of the collection of those fines, and they're to be remitted. So I'd like you to think about the, the kind of broader philosophical, how do you want the town ordinances to be enforced? There's always the option of civil penalties that do not have a possible imprisonment, criminal punishment associated with them, but then you have to think about is who enforces those, how do you write that, you know, the citations, how do you collect those? And, and while we have that in code enforcement with the inspections departments and the planning departments, don't necessarily have that with all other departments. But to the extent that those departments have been relying on the police department, the police department, from my understanding, is not writing a lot of tickets out there that go to charges. And then the final thing is, in addition to this decriminalization, is that certain, there are now new defenses to violations of local ordinances, which basically says if, say you violate the noise ordinance and there's a criminal charge for that, if you go to court and say, well, I haven't done it in the 30 days since I got that charge, that's actually a defense. There's also a defense that if your violation is associated with homelessness, unemployment, mental health or substance abuse, and you are taking some effort to seek assistance in those areas, that you will not be basically sentenced to jail time or a conviction for those kinds of things. There's a lot of thought that local ordinances have a disproportionate impact on those people experiencing poverty and experiencing mental illness and substance abuse. And the state legislature was trying to, to get at addressing that situation. So tonight, this is mainly for information, but as you think about it, I'll be providing you with a list of all of the places currently in the ordinance that are, currently in the town code of ordinances that are criminally enforced, that specifically say it's unlawful to do this, or it's charged as a misdemeanor, and you consider whether you want to keep those on the books or repeal those. We will have to repeal the enforced, part of the enforcement provision of the UDO. And once we have the ordinance amendments, they have to be presented at one meeting, one regular meeting of town council, and then adopted at a subsequent meeting. So there will be some time in December at least where we won't have the option of criminal enforcement, except for those that are specifically already in, in the code.
How many are there of those, give or take, based upon what you've seen so far?
Currently in the code?
That we're probably going to look at again, I guess.
Probably about 20 to 30 places where it's specifically stated. But remember, there's a lot of provisions in the town code where it says something's prohibited, and right now, if it's prohibited, it can be charged criminally. So we may also have to think about changing some of the language and then putting in language saying that this will be enforced via civil penalty. Under state law, some civil penalties require some due process, you know, think about like a parking ticket or something, you have an ability to potentially appeal that. So that's another thing to think about, is what kind of process do you want to give people? Clearly, in the zoning context, there, you know, there is a robust, you get a violation, you can appeal that to the Board of Adjustment. There is a due process aspect with respect to those. I don't know that it's an issue, but there, I, I think there's a lot of collection of penalties related to trash collection. People don't put their trash out correctly. People do illegal dumping, things like those that we are issuing civil penalties for right now and collecting some of those.
If I'm, if I might, Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Since we're talking about these ordinances and what have you, are we going to, when you think we can revisit the, the situation? situation with our dog ordinances? Based upon what happened a few weeks or a month so go back and we were going to revisit that? When do we think we can revisit that ordinance and do what we need to do with it?
Probably next thing on the list after we get through, because this has a hard deadline. Well, it has a state imposed deadline. But yes, I've already met with members of the police department about some suggested changes. I was waiting a little bit to see what Raleigh was going to do about their exotic animals from the lessons they learned from the snake this summer. They, they have not adopted anything new at this point. But yes, that can be brought forward.
I'd like to see that as quick as we can. Okay, thank you.
And, and to some extent, there may, there's, I think, one, there's a couple of places in the animal control ordinance where there is criminal enforcement. So we'll have to address some of that. Some of that is in align with state law. For instance, you know, interfering with an animal control officer during the discharge of duties is still, is listed as a criminal misdemeanor.
I know the hour is late, so I won't get into much, but I want to ask a quick question. Would, would this give us the authority? I haven't kept up with state statutes that well, but there are different levels of misdemeanors. Is that right? Or I guess what I wanted to ask is, would we have the authority for a certain type of offense that we think should be criminal attachment to those? Would we be able to stipulate? If there are, well, misdemeanor A, misdemeanor B, that's not what they're called.
Yeah, so, so right now the default is a class three misdemeanor, which is your lowest level. Tends to be a $50 fine and up to 30 days in jail is, is kind of the default at this point. There is authority to go up to $500, but you have to specifically state that. And there is an authority to go, to go with a more extensive jail sentence possibly. But it has to be specifically stated for those, those types of ordinances that you feel should be punished more severely on, say, the first offense.
Okay, thank you. We can get into that more, obviously, but thank you for the alert on that, Chair enough, yeah. Anything else, Joan?
Not on this matter.
Yeah, okay. All right, we will go then to council reports. And I will start with Mr. Vance down here.
Oh yes, just want to, just sort of reiterate, I'm pretty sure folks have already heard about the opening of Costco on tomorrow. I think it's 8:00 AM along with several fast food restaurants, Starbucks along with Chick-fil-A out on 401 and 1010 in that area, in the intersection there. So that's a, that's a major event that I recommend if you can welcome in the new Costco with the Garner. The next thing I would say, great job for the coordination of the Veterans Day, a celebration that was held at Avosboro Baptist Church on last, last Thursday. It was a great event. It was good to see a number of people I hadn't seen in almost two years and talked to them personally. So that was great. And congratulations to the Garner, they're not here, but Garner Police Department for their re- recreditation. That was a lot of hard work went into that. And just like hats off to the, those who were involved, to the interim chief. And one last thing, which is, I would like for the, the town staff to look at abandoned cars on Crete Road. I will give the location of those abandoned cars to, to you after the meeting so that you'll know where to look. But there are several cars I noticed there were just sitting on vacant lot, probably a license plate on them that I could see. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Dellinger.
Our hour will pass.
All right.
That's for you, Captain. You know, you ready to go?
Unbelievable, okay. There's still some signs, yard signs out advertising the bond referendum. And so we need to get those, those up. They're looking old, okay. Question about the apartments on Johnson Street. Have we heard anything from Wake County as far as working on proving those?
I have not, I don't.
I've emailed them. Wake County, I mean, enforcement is working on what they're working on. And I'm going to get with the mayor tonight to see if I can get more of a direct contact, at least someone to get back and respond to. The three emails I've sent so far, I've gotten nothing back. I didn't say they, they received my emails.
Next thing is we got an email from a lady who lives on Longdale Drive about some vacant property next to her that has, has changed hands, about to change hands. And she wanted to know what was going to be built there. It was previously owned, if I'm not mistaken, she said the Shriners owned it.
Shriners, yes.
I was wondering where the school's going to be built, if I'm not mistaken.
Longdale, no, there's no school over there. That's a residential neighborhood.
Okay, I thought it was the stubout road that goes into the.
I believe she was referencing the vacant lots that the Shriners own across from Huckleberry Friends. Take care is the general area that I believe that is probably referencing.
So do we know what's happening with that? Is there, is there an answer we can give her is my question.
I don't, I don't know if there is someone looking at it or not. I can check with staff to see if anyone submitted anything for it, but we wouldn't always know.
Thank you, okay.
Maybe it is owned for single family homes at this time.
That's all, thank you.
I'll go last, Miss Stingley.
And to give you some history of Garner about what was planned there at one time. It's when the Reverend W A Weston was working on building a church in that area. And he was going to have a heated pool there. And the pool, I saw the design with my own eyes. It was going to be heated with wood stones under the ground, under the pool. Kid you not. That was one each corner. That's what was together one day. Not joking. God bless him. I'll follow up with Mr. Vance in regards to Veterans Day event. It was very nice. Appreciate the time everyone puts in veterans who were there. It was a smaller attendance, but I think with COVID and so forth, some people may still be hesitant. As we know, many of the people there are senior citizens. But I talked to Katie, who does a good job working with that every year and thanked her for her, her time and her work on that. But and the whole council was there, which is something to say, and the mayor. So anyway, I think it was well attended. And I mean, it was, it was well attended considering the circumstances, but I also appreciate Lieutenant Colonel Thomas Smith. I told him, I said, I watch you play football. And he really did a great job. If you look at his record of service, it's outstanding. But anyway, proud, proud of someone who went through Garner School System and graduated from Garner High School, representing himself and his family and his community like that. That's all.
Just dittos on that. It's a great Veterans Day. I think it was well organized and very moving. Being a vet, I personally appreciated that and to get a chance to talk to a lot of the vets and a couple of World War II vets, which is getting to be a rare thing now sadly. And, and the only other thing is, any updates on the Christmas parade? I have people asking me some things. Yes, sir.
Need to speak with Rodney, but we've met. We had our first meeting with our volunteers this past weekend. We'll have the route, we'll just be on Main Street. The time will be 9:30. So we're giving ourselves a little wiggle room on the 18th. So we still need to meet this week to work on some parking locations and some stuff like that. But we have, I believe, 37 or almost 40 confirmed entrants. So it's, it's going to be a full parade. It's mostly kid oriented and, you know, holiday oriented. So we got a couple of bands. We got dance groups and choral groups and civic organizations. So we're going to have a parade.
Okay.
We got the approvals or we're in the process pretty close to getting the approvals from the railroad and got the agreement that we're signing, just recently signed.
Okay, I'll mention just a couple, two, three things very quickly. And just second to what Mr. Vance said about the reaccreditation. We don't, we shouldn't ever take that for granted, but we're proud that our police department has received accreditation, reaccreditation on several occasions. I've forgotten what the consecutive number of years are. I would remind council that sort of led by our economic director, Director Joe Stallings, there's going to be a, a launch graduation tomorrow night at the Rand Brian House. A meal is included, but this will recognize the initial group of persons who went through that program.
Thursday night.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yep, you're right, you're right. And I've got Thursday and I didn't read Thursday. So at any rate, Thursday, if you can, if you can make that. And then I would like to just publicly thank the citizens of Garner for their votes, particularly on passage of our bond issues. And the town takes their vote very seriously. And we look forward to working on those items that they voted on and moving with those. Excited about the prospects for that. And then, of course, congratulate the, the candidates who were elected or reelected. And so that was, I believe that's, oh, I failed to publicly thank Katie Lockhart, serving in the program as I did this year. I had a close up look of some of the work that she does behind the scenes and, and some of the last minute changes to the agenda that had to occur. I meant to thank her publicly there at the event and I just failed to do it. And so Katie, if you're listening out there tonight, thank you so much. You certainly helped me out. And, and she was sort of the, the behind the scenes person that really kept.
Mayor, when do they get sworn in again? What?
Yeah, that would be, I believe, the first meeting in December. That's when the term sort of officially starts. And I guess we should mention that if the persons to be sworn in want to, you know, select a person to swear them in, they should, I guess, let the town manager know. We have.
Let the clerk, town clerk know. I think there are certain positions that can swear you in. So judges, Secretary of State, et cetera.
Mayor can swear you in, I guess, but I'm not suggesting that. At any rate, yeah, so and of course that would just be for the two newly elected. Okay. All right, anything else? That's all I have anyway. So we have finished our regular agenda. I will entertain a motion that we go into closed session. Ms. Attorney, do we need to cite the various reasons and statutes for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor moves pursuant to General Statute Section 143318, Subset A, Subset 11A3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation, 11 Subset A, Item 6, in regards to personnel issue. Item 11, Subset A, Item 4, economic development issue. 11 Subset A, Number 5, potential land acquisition. All four items move to go into closed session with the town attorney.
Second. Second, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous in passing. Thank you. I declare that we are going into closed session at this time. Declare that we're back in open session. The council went into closed session to discuss several matters. One was a litigation with our attorney. Another one was to look at possible property acquisition or report from our staff. Another one was relation to a personnel matter that the council is working on. And what was the last? Yeah, yeah, the other one had to do with economic development. And we received information from staff and took no specific action at this time. So with that, then we finished our regular agenda. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Okay, so moved and seconded by Mr. Dellinger. All in favor, please say aye. And so ordered. Thank you all. I thought I heard you.